Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we, the representatives of the City of Brisbane, are assembled here today to strive and care for the welfare of our city and its people. Lord, we ask you to guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians of their language, song and dance. We pay respect to elders, past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. Councillors, I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of their obligations to declare prescribed and/or declarable conflicts of interest where relevant and the requirements of such to remove themselves from the chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Are there any apologies?
Mr Acting Chair, I advise that Councillor Huang, Councillor Matic and Councillor McLaughlin will be absent today and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Sutton to be granted Councillors Huang... Sorry, I've forgotten. I didn't write it down properly.
Councillor Matic and Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you. Councillor Huang, Councillor Matic and Councillor McLaughlin have a leave of presence granted for today's meeting. All those in favour say aye. Those against? We have no public speaker today. Councillors, I draw your attention to the motion of appreciation, item number two on the agenda. Councillor Johnson, would you please move your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move the following motion of appreciation, that Brisbane City Council acknowledges and thanks the Buddhist Compassionate Relief Zuchi Foundation for their ongoing partnership with Brisbane City Council during the recent 2020 flood, including their work at the evacuation centre and their extraordinary kindness, on-the-ground volunteer support during the flood clean-up and their generous emergency disaster relief funding for flood-affected Brisbane residents.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Johnson and seconded by Councillor Griffiths that Brisbane City Council acknowledges and thanks the Buddhist Compassion Relief Zuchi Foundation for their ongoing friendship with Brisbane City Council during the recent 2022 flood, including their work at the evacuation centre and their extraordinary kindness, on-the-ground volunteering support during the flood and clean-up and generous emergency disaster relief funding for flood-affected Brisbane residents. Is there any debate?
Yes. Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. It is with great appreciation that I rise today to move this motion of appreciation and thanks to the Zuchi Foundation. And I will describe them as Zuchi, they have a very long name, but they're most commonly known as Zuchi. And I acknowledge and welcome many of their representatives here today in the public gallery. And I know that many will be watching at home or perhaps watch back later. They're a very hard-working group and I know many of them are at work today. So thank you to those volunteers who have joined us here in the chamber today. As always, you are very welcome and we thank you for attending. I've moved this motion today because both in 2011 and in 2022, Zuchi have contributed so much to the flood recovery effort here in Brisbane. For those of you who don't know who Zuchi is, they started in Australia about 30 years ago and they've been very active in Brisbane for over two decades. Their objective when started by Master Chen Yang back in the 1960s was to relieve suffering and to help the poor. And they do that through a number of means. They do that through charitable works, they do that through their medical intervention and that's a big part of what Zuchi does here in Brisbane and in Australia. They do that through education and they do that through helping the environment. They are active in 47 countries around the world and they have responded to disasters and helped relieve suffering in 69 countries around the world. And one of those is right here in Brisbane. I was lucky enough to meet Zuchi in 2011 when some very lovely people came through my temporary office at Annalee and offered to help. Now, I have to confess, at that time I did not know who Zuchi were. And as it was explained to me, and this is the way I think of them, they are the charitable arm of the Buddhist faith, so they're a little bit like Vinnies are to the Catholic faith. And they undertake the same type of effort. There is so much that they do to help those in need and they do it from a faith-based perspective. So it's very easy to understand their motivation. And in 2011, they were really extraordinary in working with myself and Councillor Griffiths to help some of our most badly flood-affected suburbs. And we ran a number of events at Maruka State School to assist with their recovery. Following that, Zuchi said that they wanted to do more. So I was very pleased to introduce them to the leadership team at Brisbane City Council and they entered into a memorandum of understanding with Brisbane City Council to help in the event of a major disaster by helping run the evacuation centre. So when the floods hit again in 2022, 580 of their volunteers, and these are volunteers, they are students, they are hard-working dentists and doctors and bankers, there are some retired people as well, but these are people who volunteered their time to help run the evacuation centre at Brisbane City Council. And they did that because of the partnership that was established following the 2011 floods. More importantly, from my point of view, they again identified that they wanted to help those who were very badly flood-affected in my ward. And we identified the suburbs of Fairfield, Huronga and Corinda, as well as some other vulnerable individuals who particularly needed help in my ward. The assistance that Zuchi have provided has been extraordinary. They turned out in force on the Mud Army Day to help in those suburbs, Oxley, Fairfield and Corinda. And Councillor Griffiths will talk about the suburbs in his ward. They again offered very generous financial support, and not just in my ward but in the suburbs, in Councillor Griffiths' ward and in Ipswich City Council. And I know that they have to date given over $180,000 to flood-affected residents of Brisbane. And these are people who desperately need help to recover. The funding has been given in such a thoughtful, caring and meaningful way and it has made such a difference in people's lives. I've been able to talk to many of the people who received that funding and it's meant they've been able to clean up or purchase a new piece of equipment that was flooded in their home. So their financial support has been extremely generous. I know one of my elderly residents in a part of Oxley that was badly flooded said these lovely young students dressed in their blue and white outfit turned up on the Mud Army Day and helped move, seeing what was in her backyard. It had fridges and it had things that had washed down Oxley Creek. These young people who hadn't been involved in flood relief before helped carry these heavy items out to the curb and helped this very elderly lady in Oxley recover. They did this in suburbs around Brisbane, like many others did in our community. Their generosity and their financial support is quite extraordinary. And on behalf of our community, I want to particularly thank, and I know I'm not supposed to thank anybody by name, but the person I've been dealing with for 12 years is actually sitting in the gallery. And I particularly want to thank Patrick Liu and all of the team. I met Patrick 11 years ago and it's been my pleasure to attend events at Zuchi every year. I have my money box on my desk that I put all my spare change into and take to Zuchi functions. I know Councillor Griffiths and I often attend their cultural events and their annual events that they have. And they're about to move into their new premises as well and I'm sure Councillor Griffiths will say something more about that. This is an extremely wonderful organisation that we are very lucky to have in Brisbane City Council. Their kindness, their hard work and their generosity has meant that many families that had nowhere to go after the floods have had that hand of friendship offered. And their journey on flood recovery has been able to get started because of the help from Zuchi. I want to say to all of the Zuchi volunteers who may be watching or not here today, that our community is very grateful for your support. We thank you so much for your care and kindness for our community, not just in 2000, not just in 2022, but in all of the everyday work that you do behind the scenes. We know that there is so much more and I know Councillor Griffiths will talk a little bit about that. We know that every day you are volunteering in our community to help those in need, to relieve suffering and to make the Brisbane community an even stronger and even more inclusive place to live. I want to make sure that you know that our city thanks you for your work officially in the evacuation centre and that as councillors, we acknowledge and thank you for your generosity, your kindness and the financial support that you have given flood victims in 2022. We thank you so very much and we look forward to making sure that the partnership continues for many, many years to come. Thank you, Zuchi.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. And I rise on behalf of the administration in this chamber today to extend our support behind this motion of appreciation to Zuchi Foundation. And could I take this opportunity to acknowledge Deputy Director of Zuchi Brisbane, Mr Patrick Liu, who is here today, and also other members of the delegation who include Grace Yu Chi Wang, Han Jai Ning, Hiu Hin Trong, Sin Yin Foo, Alice I Sin Lu, Mint Ha, Eschen Hoak and Wayne Hung. Welcome and it is a pleasure to have you here with us today. Thank you very much for coming to the gallery because this is our opportunity as an administration to also extend to you our sincere and heartfelt thanks for the work that you have done in this city for many, many years now. And I do acknowledge that 2022 is the 30th anniversary of Zuchi. And through you, Mr Chair, I think this is very significant that we are honouring Zuchi Foundation for the contribution that they have made across our city of Brisbane for many decades now. I also think it's prudent that we're doing this motion of appreciation on the cusp of Buddha's birthday because we all know that when we give thanks to Buddha, we give the prayers to think good thoughts, say kind words and do good deeds. And the Zuchi Foundation certainly demonstrate that for our citizens of Brisbane in many, many ways and they are a great support. And I know that former Lord Mayor Graham Quirk had much to do with you in your inception and also personally wrote to you acknowledging your contribution in the 2011 floods. And I know that our Lord Mayor is very proud of the Zuchi Foundation, which is such a great honour to have you here today. Now, the thing that is so important is that you have embarked into a formal memorandum of understanding with Brisbane City Council. You are our partner and have been for many years. And those memorandums of understanding are renewed every three years, the most recent one being signed on the 16th of March 2020. And we do look forward to continuing the partnership in years to come. And the context of that memorandum of understanding includes the provision of welfare support at the evacuation centres, personal support to evacuees and also the provision of portable bedding. And often that is something that means so much to so many that they have a place to rest, to recharge their batteries and also have that support at a very, very difficult and confronting time of their lives. And I know the pastoral support and compassion that you have always shown as an organisation to our city and our citizens has been phenomenal in that regard. And I also know that you work collaboratively with the many other organisations that provide support in those evacuation centres. So I know that you have been part of many ongoing evacuation exercises with our Disaster Management Division and certainly that there will be more of those to come in the future. But most of all, on behalf of the administration in Brisbane City Council, in this place today, I extend to all of you, through you, Mr Chair, to Mr Patrick Liu, the Deputy Director, could you please pass on to all members of your organisation, our heartfelt thanks for the work and contribution that you make to our city and our citizens? Thank you very much. Our city of Brisbane is extremely proud of the contribution of the Zuchi Foundation.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mr Speaker. And I rise to, obviously to second this motion, but also to thank Councillor Johnson for doing such a good job in praising the Zuchi Foundation. Can I say that through my 20-year history of this council, I've had a very close working relationship with the foundation and found them very responsive and very inclusive of many members of the community. I am particularly impressed with the terrific work that they have done in the community, both during times of emergency but also times when it is an emergency and when the community needs to be listened to. I particularly would like to thank Patrick, who has been the main gentleman that I've been dealing with over my time with Zuchi Foundation, who's done a remarkable job in keeping contact with me. And just like to raise some of our history together. I know that there have been numerous flood events affecting my electorate and the city during my time in council, but 2011 was certainly a significant event. And it was the Zuchi Foundation who actually were very available and committed at Rockleigh and worked really hard, not just with locals but also with other community groups. There's none of that division that sometimes you see, none of that territorial turf war. It was how can we work together to get the best results for the community? And that's a really strong strength of the Zuchi Foundation. It was actually, I think Councillor Johnson mentioned it, that we wrote after 2011 floods, wrote to the administration asking for you to be included more formally with a memorandum of understanding. And I'm glad that the administration picked up on that and that you were able to assist formally in 2022. I think that is a real win for our city and for our residents. I've also worked with Zuchi Foundation in setting up a relationship with Common Ground. Common Ground is run by MiCA Projects. And what many people might be aware of is that you provide dental services to refugees and to people who can't afford them. And I think that the service, the dental service and the healthcare service that you're providing with Project MiCA at Common Ground is wonderful for our city and wonderful for those residents who so need that service. And I think, I thank you again for that. And it's interesting to see, my background is obviously Catholic, and it's interesting to see a lot of similarities between the Buddhists and the Catholics in their thinking and in their provision of service to the community. Look, I understand the evacuation centre worked very well in 2022 and certainly a source for lots of residents, a stable, safe place to find. But I have to say, Zuchi contacted me the day of the flooding. Patrick contacted me and said, Steve, how can we help? And what we did is we went out there into the community the next day and set up tents. We had a small meeting with local groups, we set up tents and we provided services for a week in the community when no one was around. So before the mud army appeared, five or seven days later, we were on the ground and Zuchi was on the ground providing services to residents when they needed it. And I believe that's a model that we as a city need to be looking at into the future for future flood events. We need to have a local, responsive way of working and harnessing the energy of our volunteers, of our community groups, our religious groups, so that we can provide immediate, immediate responses on the ground, not five or seven days later. Residents need it then and there. So Zuchi, thank you for working with me to do that. And that was a huge outcome for residents and made such a big difference to their lives. And thanks for working with other groups like the Lions and the churches. It was amazing. I know that there were two other events that followed. And Zuchi did one at Maruka State School where over 100 families were seen and given a cash donation. And then there was another one at Salisbury where another over 50 families from across the city and from Ipswich were also given money. In fact, more money than they were given by the federal government. More money than they were given by the federal government. And that money assisted those residents sometimes to get electricity on their homes, sometimes to buy a bed, sometimes to us to rent accommodation many of them still aren't in. That was over $180,000 that they gave away. And the association is still, when our state and federal governments aren't around to be seen, still working with community members now, some of our most vulnerable people. I really believe that as a council, we should be harnessing the energy of this great group who can work so well with the community and we should be looking at what we do in the future, not to just build on them running a centre for people who have left flooding, but build on doing local hubs that respond to flooding in a really effective way. I know Councillor Johnson and myself were very impressed, very impressed with the way the group worked with us. We're impressed with the way you turned up as a mud army and worked with us. Many residents in my ward, in my electorate, didn't want to have the mud army in. And I've said that before, they lost so much in the 2011 floods. There are about a third of residents who didn't want that. And what we set up as an alternative was sending the Zuchi organisation in with four or five people who built a relationship with those families and those homes and those people and worked with them over a number of days to help them clear out their homes. So they weren't just having anyone come into their home, they were having a group that was able to support them in a ongoing way. And I think that is a good outcome for residents and it's a good outcome for how you and myself and Councillor Johnson work together. I'm very impressed by your organisation. I believe, like I do with many not-for-profit, I come from the not-for-profit sector, like many of our religious groups, many of our not-for-profits, you live your values. And that is one of the things we need to be seeing more of in our city. I thank Zuchi for a wonderful job and for what they've done for Brisbane city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Griffiths. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson, write a reply.
Thank you. Lord Mayor doesn't want to say anything?
You have the right to reply, Councillor Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you to Councillor Owen and to Councillor Griffiths for speaking today. I guess in this case I speak on behalf of the city, which doesn't happen very often. And I would say then I'm speaking on behalf of the Lord Mayor because I presume he's going to vote for this motion. I do just want to say that as a city, we are extremely appreciative of all of your efforts for the past 20 years in Brisbane and 30 years in Australia. And going back to the very foundations of Master Chen Yang's vision for relieving poverty when it first started in Taiwan. Every single volunteer from Zuchi, from whatever country they have come from, has had the same feeling of charity and kindness in their hearts that she had, you know, all those years ago. And you are continuing to live that mission through your works here in Brisbane. And there is no better example of that than how you responded to our community again in 2022. In 2021, it was somewhat of a shock and we were very much finding who you were and getting to know each other. And I think it's been a very positive thing that Councillor Griffiths and I have been able to continue working with you over the past 11 years and that when you offered help again this time, we were able to say yes, we were able to figure out what worked for your volunteers and for our community and put you together. Because that has made all the difference for the people in the suburbs that I represent where you were able to assist. We will forever be grateful for your hard work in the evacuation centre. And certainly I hope that you can continue to do that through your memorandum of understanding officially with Brisbane City Council. But like Councillor Griffiths, that partnership at a local level between our community and your volunteers and your community has been critical in making sure that some of the worst flood-affected suburbs in Brisbane have been able to start their flood recovery journey. Without Zuchi, that would not have been possible for many people that I have been dealing with. And as Patrick would know, I'm still talking to him and asking for his help. Certainly, we are still seeing, unfortunately, people in very dire circumstances around Brisbane and particularly in the community that I represent. And I know that Zuchi will continue to work with those residents where they can, they have told me that they are going to do that. This is not for them a one-and-done event, they are in this for the long haul. Responding to natural disasters, relieving suffering and offering friendship and charity is part of their core mission and something that they live through their values every day. I just want to put on the record that our council here at Brisbane is enormously grateful for your hard work, for your generosity. We hope that our partnership with you will continue for many years. And we know that you do so much work outside of Brisbane as well. When I do talk to Patrick, when I see him at events, you're often out to remote and regional communities of Brisbane offering help and support. So we know that this is a wonderful mission that you bring to all the corners of Queensland and we wish you well with those endeavours, not just in Brisbane but also in Queensland. I did forget to mention, at the Maruka event that we had, there are a number of volunteers who came from interstate and I spoke to several who came from Melbourne. I don't know if there are others from other states, but I know that Zuchi volunteers came from all over Australia to help here in Brisbane. And our council is very grateful to those people who took time out of their lives, because we're still dealing with COVID as well and the complexities of COVID, but who took time out of their lives and came from interstate to help us. Please make sure that those chapters of Zuchi are aware that our council is very grateful and has moved this motion of appreciation today. Finally, I would just like to say that when disasters happen in Brisbane City Council, it's very clear that government really only plays a small part in how our community responds. That was very clear to me in 2011. And unfortunately, I think it's even clearer in 2022. All three levels of government have failed, I think, in many ways to respond to the needs of our community to address the impact of this very catastrophic flood. But what has been so positive and so overwhelming, and every councillor who's flooded would know this, that there are groups like Zuchi and other service organisations and faith-based organisations that put their hands up and said, we are here to help. Well, today we are acknowledging and recognising the hard work of the Buddhist Compassionate Relief Zuchi Foundation for their formal and informal partnerships with Brisbane City Council in helping in the 2022 flood. We thank you for your kindness, we thank you for your generosity and we look forward to a long and fruitful partnership with Zuchi for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,676th meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of March 2022, be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,676th meeting of council held on the 22nd of March 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye. Those against? The ayes have it. Just one second, councillors. Move on to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor, Civic Cabinet Chair or any other standing committee? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the Sretta Council has been working hard to make sure our city gets back on its feet, allowing residents to access our wonderful parks, bikeways and ferry services again. Could you please update the chamber on what has been achieved to date in terms of our citywide clean-up efforts?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. And through you, I want to thank Councillor Hutton for the question because you're absolutely right. We have all been working hard to make sure that our city recovers as quickly as possible after what is a truly devastating flood event. The... The, the effort in terms of recovery continues and will continue for many, many months to come. And one of the things that our fantastic council officers have been doing right since the early days when the water started subsiding is assessments on virtually every single type of asset that the city owns right across the city. Literally tens of thousands of assessments were made on different types of assets to determine the status of the damage or the nature of the damage, the extent of the damage, and then what work needs to be done to recover as a city. And so that includes a whole range of assets that councillors are responsible for. And they've done a fantastic job in responding in terms of both the initial clean-up response, but planning for the recovery and the rebuilding and then getting on and delivering that process. Now, it's interesting because one of the things that is now becoming clearer is the cost of this event in total will be significant. And for the first time, I can confirm today that the cost of this event will far exceed the cost of 2011, will far exceed the cost of 2011 when it comes to the council infrastructure and assets that they were responsible for and the cost of recovery. Now, in 2011, there was a four hundred and forty million dollar total cost, of which state and federal governments contributed funds in terms of disaster recovery funds, leaving council with an out-of-pocket bill or effectively a cost to the council budget of one hundred and six million dollars. So four hundred and forty million total cost, a hundred and six million was the amount that council, or we, needed to find as an organisation. So we know that the figure, the total cost and also the amount of money that council will need to find will be significantly more than that. And in fact, when we're drilling down into the detail on what council will need to find, we expect now that it will be more than double or even triple the cost of 2011. That's the money that council will need to find. So that is significant. Now, you might ask, where is the damage? You know, because there are parts of the city that look reasonably normal at the moment and some of this damage is not always obvious. There are other parts where it is obvious. And so let me go down and highlight some of the things that we have discovered. There were eight hundred and sixty-three different parks that were flooded, including three hundred playgrounds. There were twenty-five toilet facilities that were flooded and damaged. There were forty, or more than forty, dog-off-leash areas that were flooded and damaged. There were an incredible amount of roads that were flooded, two hundred and eighty-five kilometres of roads that were flooded, and that caused damage right across those networks, the road network. But there will be at least seventy-eight roads that will need substantial reconstruction and, you know, full resurfacing work. There was four thousand two hundred and eighty-two street lights and bikeway lights that were flooded and all needed to be inspected and many of them needed to be repaired. There were two hundred and thirty-five kilometres of bikeway that was damaged and some of that bikeway now no longer exists, particularly along Kedron Brook where it's been washed away entirely. Five of our council pools were flooded and there is still one that is entirely offline at Jindalee. We have eight community gardens that were flooded and damaged. In terms of one of the biggest costs, it is to the leased facilities, which is community clubs and sporting facilities that we lease to community groups and sporting organisations. Now, the interesting thing is, we had three hundred and nine leased sites that have damaged. That is forty-eight percent of all council leased sites. Forty-eight percent of leased sites were damaged. And that includes a hundred and seventy-nine buildings that were damaged and a hundred and one sports fields that were damaged. And that bill will be significant. And so there is a major cost there. Some people aren't aware, our quarries, two council operational quarries were flooded. And in fact, the Mount Cootha Quarry will not be pumped out of water until approximately July. We'll be pumping water out of the quarry until July. The Brakalba Quarry will take up to six months to pump out all the water. So that's how much water came into quarries. Many, forty-three closed landfills were damaged as well. And so the scale of this event, it was a different event to 2011, we know that, but the damage was more widespread. And so more suburbs were impacted, more streets were impacted, more homes and businesses were impacted, and that damage was across a much wider area. And we'll remember that the flooding that happened in 2011 was associated in the main with river flooding. And so those low-lying areas that are impacted by river flooding were impacted, but it was in this case, it was those areas plus many, many more areas that were impacted by creek flooding and overland flow flooding. So we have a significant job ahead of us. There will be a significant cost to the budget. And that comes after two years of COVID, which has also had a cost to the budget as well. So we'll continue working for the recovery of the city and we'll keep people updated, we'll keep councillors updated as we progress this recovery plan and also update you on the costs associated with that. Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Acting Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Any further questions? Councillor.
Thanks very much Acting Chair. My question is to the lord mayor. In one of your recent Twitter posts about the Brisbane Bendy Bus Project, one person replied suggesting you should also be building bus lanes and zero tailpipe emission bike lanes in the suburbs. You replied to them, Lord Mayor, commenting, and I quote, "How about you stop hiding behind an anonymous account like a shady troll and put a real name to your convictions hashtag just saying?" Another person replied to your comment saying, and I quote, "What a weird response to a pretty mundane comment." Then you replied with, and I quote, "Um, says someone with yet another anonymous account." It's one thing to ignore residents which you do religiously, Lord Mayor, but it's another thing entirely to call them names and aggressively dismiss their comments. Will you apologise to these people for your aggressive, childish and unnecessary comments on social media, Lord Mayor?
Lord Mayor.
The number-one Twitter troll in council is asking a question on behalf of Twitter trolls. We know that all councillor Cassidy does all day is troll social media and...
Point of order Chair. It's a fair point. I know different people have, I guess, associate different levels of offensiveness with that term, but it doesn't seem to behoove the mayor to just start calling other councillors trolls. It's not constructive. I'd ask the mayor to consider withdrawing or reframing that comment.
Lord Mayor.
Well, look councillor Sri, you would know that I have a very clear social media policy, which is published, and it says trolls will be blocked. And so it's, it's very clear. I'm very upfront about it because I have not a single moment of time for people, for people that spend their time anonymously or, in some cases like councillor Cassidy, not anonymously, trolling other people.
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillors, the response will be heard in silence. Lord Mayor.
Point of order Chair.
Councillor Sri.
I'm seeking a rule in from you because I believe it's inappropriate to use that kind of terminology. It's just attacking other people with name-calling, which is something that's been discussed in this chamber repeatedly. I'd like to understand whether you think it is appropriate to call people trolls and I'd like you to clarify what the definition of that term is.
I'll get back to you on the definition. I'm not a lawyer. However, the word, use of the word troll is quite open in the public space and the public arena. And I believe the lord mayor was addressing that particular question.
Well, let me rephrase. Keyboard warrior, okay? Let's call them keyboard warriors. Whatever you might want to call them, the reality is, some people on social media only wish to criticise, attack and spread negativity. Some people on social media do that with their real name. Other people are too gutless to use their real name. Now councillor Cassidy said, will I apologise to these people? Well, I don't know who they are because they're using anonymous accounts. And so, look, I simply think this is part of a much wider issue where this kind of thing is lowering the level of debate. And if people aren't prepared to put their own name on their opinions, then really think twice about being a keyboard warrior. I respect people who use their own name and express an opinion.
Just, just, I get, just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillors, I will remind you, the lord mayor is speaking, one person speaking at a time, and that goes to both sides of the chamber.
But quite frankly...
Last warning please. No interjection while the lord mayor is speaking. Lord Mayor.
Quite frankly, it would be impossible for someone to apologise to people who are using anonymous accounts. I don't know who I would be apologising to. But look, let's, let's lift the standard of debate here councillor Cassidy. I don't have a lot of hope that that will happen while you're the leader of the opposition.
Sorry, Lord Mayor.
The reality...
Sorry, Lord Mayor, through the Chair please. If you're addressing other councillors.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Sri.
The mayor's talking about lifting the standard of debate and then simultaneously referring to other councillors as trolls. Surely you can see that there's a... No, that's exactly what he said. And, and look...
Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I repeat again, I will not stand for online bullying, online trolling and for people who are gutlessly being keyboard warriors in that way. It doesn't do anything for a healthy democracy. I'm quite happy to have an argument on or a debate on any issue. But when you see this kind of trolling behaviour and then when you see it flow down through society with children being trolled and bullied online, we should not stand for this. We should not stand for this. And I've got to say, I think it's fantastic that Elon Musk has taken over Twitter because hopefully only real people will be able to go on Twitter, people that verify their identity and are prepared...
Councillors, councillor Griffiths, I, I cannot be... Councillor Griffiths, I cannot be any clearer. The lord mayor is responding, the lord mayor is responding to a question. Please refrain from interjecting. Councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And so, look, you know, if real people want to express real opinions, you know, there's a place for that. And like I said, I'm always happy to debate. But that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about something far more insidious and destructive to democratic debate in our society. And, and look, you know, you should councillor Cassidy and co. be concerned also about the trolling of your friends in the state government because the premier gets ruthlessly trolled as well by anonymous accounts and it is not right. It is not right. And so the reality is, you know, this is something that is not constructive for democracy. It's really not constructive for democracy. And so councillor Cassidy may want to defend the anonymous keyboard warriors, but I say it's not good enough and it needs to change.
Any further questions? Councillor Johnson.
Thank you. Yes, my question is to the deputy mayor. On Saturday, the fifth of March at one fifty-four PM, I was called by council officer Danny and I returned her call at three thirty-five PM. My question is to the deputy mayor. On Saturday, the fifth of March at one fifty-four, I was called by council officer Danny and I returned her call at three thirty-five PM and Miss Tash Tobias answered. I spoke with Mr Tobias for eight minutes and forty-four seconds. At that time, why did you lie? Why did you lie?
Point of order.
Councillor Wines.
Mr Acting Chair, isn't it a requirement that the questions go alternately from side to side of the room? Wouldn't this be two in a row for the minority benches?
Well, there was no one standing from the...
Councillor...
Not how the rule works.
Councillor Wines, I've called councillor Johnson and she was first to her feet.
A long way. Thank you. Why did you lie in the council meeting of the fifteenth of March and say I did not return that, the call that same afternoon? How can anyone believe a word you say when you are prepared to openly lie about a phone call that you are not a party to?
Point of order, Mr Acting Chair.
Councillor Wines.
It's my view that councillor Johnson's using language unbecoming of this environment, of this council, and I ask that she no longer, that you consider calling on her to replace the use of the word lie in this question, please.
Thank you councillor Wines. Would you mind using alternative words councillor Johnson?
Councillor Adams lied, i.e. she gave false information and I stand by that. So my question is, why did she lie in the council meeting of the fifteenth of March and say I did not return the call that afternoon? How can anyone believe a word that she says when she is prepared to openly lie about a phone call that she was not a party to?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. I'm happy to respond to that if councillor Johnson does read through the handsout. I did misspeak when I said that councillor Johnson didn't return the call later that afternoon and I corrected that on the record that evening on the fifteenth of March.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
My question is to the lord mayor. Lord Mayor, the Shrima Council's award-winning Brisbane Metro project continues to reach new milestones with the recent arrival of the Metro Pilot Vehicle in Brisbane. Can you please update the chamber on the pilot vehicle and the importance of this project for Brisbane?
Thank you through you, Mr Acting Chair, councillor Atwood. I have to say though, that the Brisbane Metro is no longer just the council's metro. It is also the federal government's metro and now, since the last time we met, the state government's metro as well. It is now funded by all levels of government. It is supported by all levels of government and all levels of government are putting in their shoulder to the wheel to get this project going and to take its place as a critical piece in the public transport system of this state and particularly of an Olympic city. And so one of the great milestones that we had just recently was the arrival of the Metro Pilot Vehicle. Now, I've got to say, this thing is like nothing you have ever seen before. It is fantastic. I literally was blown away by the scale of this vehicle, but also the technology being used. Fully electric, fast charging, zero tailpipe emissions, can carry anything up to a hundred and seventy passengers for major event mode like the Olympics. And it is so exciting to see this vehicle here in Brisbane now going into that testing phase. And it was quite interesting to see because we've been talking about this project for a long time and beavering away to make sure it is delivered. And right now, we're seeing construction work happening on Adelaide Street as part of the major tunnel project that's happening. And to have the vehicle now enter the testing phase is obviously a major milestone. Now, on the day of the, the media announcement about the Metro Vehicle, when we showed our local media this amazing vehicle, the day before that, we also had the opportunity to show the deputy premier the vehicle. And he was particularly impressed by this vehicle. He, he actually got a sneak peek of the Metro Vehicle. And obviously, he understands the importance of this vehicle and this project for the city of Brisbane and for the Olympics as well. But it seems that the only person that didn't get the memo about the Metro was councillor Cassidy. Because on the day that we had this jointly funded project supported by all three levels of government, he was once again bagging the project, bagging it, despite the fact that his state colleagues in George Street are now funding, they're a funding partner of Brisbane Metro. So I don't know whether he got, whether he got a slap on the knuckles for that ill-advised response, but he is now attacking a Labor state government endorsed project. But when you actually hear what he said, the story becomes even more ludicrous because he said, oh, we should, we should have just bought normal buses and put them onto the busway. Like, hang on a second. Like, let's go back a bit. The problem is, there are too many normal buses on the busway. There are major bottlenecks. There are sections of missing busway that are contributing to massive bottlenecks where people are getting held up. The whole flow of traffic in the busway network grinds to a halt because there are too many buses going into a busway that has capacity issues. And so our solution, the Brisbane Metro solution, is to reduce the number of vehicles by having much larger, higher capacity, higher technology vehicles, but also building new sections of busway that are missing. And so those two things help deal with the bottlenecks. Yet councillor... Yet councillor Cassidy's response is, just throw more buses into an already congested busway network. That'll work. This is unbelievable. This project, he's been hearing about it for years. He still doesn't understand the fundamentals of the problems that we are facing. It is mind-boggling that we have a leader of the opposition that is so out of touch with this project and what it is designed to do, and the fact that his own colleagues in George Street are supporting and funding this same project. I will leave you all with the comment from Premier Palache on the day that the city deal was signed. She was asked, why is the Brisbane Metro suddenly being part of this city deal? And her response, it is critical transport infrastructure. Thank you. Mic drop. Thank you, Premier Palache.
Further questions? Councillor Adaman.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Sri.
Just wanted to clarify, if you could... I'm sorry to interrupt, if you could clarify when I'm due for a question? And are you still going side to side?
Yes, I'm going side to side, and you are not due for a question. A little while on. Councillor Adaman, please continue.
Thank you, Acting Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Earlier, the Lord Mayor provided an update on our city's recovery efforts. Much like 2011, it's no secret that the recovery bill will be a large cost to council. Could you please update the chamber on the anticipated financial impact from the 2022 floods?
Councillor Cunningham, sorry.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr Acting Chair, to councillor Adaman for the question. The extreme flooding and rainfall event earlier this year was an unprecedented event and one which has had devastating impacts for our community. The Shrima Council has been focused on getting Brisbane back on its feet, allocating significant resources towards the recovery effort. In the immediate aftermath of the floods, we have been focused on cleaning up, restoring services and key infrastructure, and preparing to rebuild. We've also been supporting our vulnerable residents, businesses and community groups with rate relief and payments. Over $1 million has been distributed to community groups to assist with the clean-up already. All residential rate accounts were deferred by a month, and thousands of ratepayers in suburbs hard hit by the floods will receive a $250 rebate. Nearly $1.4 million in rate rebates has been confirmed so far, with applications still open until the 15th of June. We've already approved 257 rate rebates in the suburb of Deegan, 274 in Brisbane City, 171 in Oxley, 178 in Rockleigh, 214 in St Lucia, 224 in West End, and 195 in Graceville. I encourage all councillors to remind their residents that if they were impacted by the floods, they are eligible for a rebate, and they can still apply either via our website or the contact centre. In 2011, we had a river flood, with damage to an estimated 14,500 properties across Brisbane. There was $440 million in flood damages then. Significantly more if we look at it in today's dollars. The 2022 event had river flooding, creek flooding, overland flow flooding and rain inundation, with an estimated 30,000 properties affected. So that's twice as many properties impacted in 2022 as there were in 2011. So you can imagine what the impact will be when it comes to council's assets. One thing we know is that the bill will be higher than 2011. We have been working with our insurer and the Queensland Reconstruction Authority to ensure all documentation has been captured, so we are appropriately reimbursed for eligible costs. We welcome the recently announced federal funding for flood-affected sports clubs in Brisbane, with the LMP government committing $940,000 to East Football Club at Heath Park in East Brisbane and $4 million for clubs at Carmichael Park in Tingalpa. We also acknowledge the state government's recent announcement of $30 million in funding to be shared across multiple councils for flood clean-up activities previously not considered eligible for reimbursement. There will be significant amounts for which the state and federal government will not reimburse council. And this will, of course, impact our budget. It's also important to remember that the context of our financial position leading up to this natural disaster. The pandemic has meant that the Shrima Council has already been providing significant relief to households, businesses and community groups. While we have maintained a balanced budget by making tough decisions in recent years, an event like what we've just been through will mean there are more difficult decisions for us to come. It should be remembered that previously, the Shrima Council has been criticised by the Labor Party for running a surplus during the pandemic. In fact, Minister Cameron Dick chastised us, complaining that, quote, "Council didn't even go into deficit", as if prudent financial management was a bad thing or an optional decision. Ratepayers should thank that the Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrima, is our city treasurer and not Cameron Dick. By carefully managing the budget over the past decade, we are in a better position today than if we had already gone... Mr Chair.
Councillors. Thank you. Your apology is accepted. Cunningham, please continue.
Thanks, Mr Acting Chair. By carefully managing the budget over the past decade, we're in a better position today than if we had already gone into the red because the Labor Party thought it was just the expected thing to do. Even though we have kept the budget balanced, the pandemic has had a significant impact. Over the past two years of the pandemic, the relief provided and foregone revenue to council as a result of COVID has been in the order of $100 million. So make no mistake, Mr Acting Chair, there will be difficult decisions ahead as the coming budget is delivered. In 2011, the floods were nearly two months earlier in the budget cycle, so we had less time to properly assess and define the overall cost impact and factor this into our budget.
Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. Are there any further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Acting Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's clear you have no remorse for your inappropriate comments you made to residents on Twitter recently. You're supposed to be representing the people of Brisbane, and here you are berating them online. Time and time again, you prioritise inner-city projects over the suburbs, and residents are starting to notice, and they're trying to hold you to account over social media. On top of attacking them, you also still never answer those genuine questions. So I will ask you directly now on behalf of those residents. Lord Mayor, in response to the Brisbane Bendy Bus Project, which you call the Metro, how about you also build some bus lanes and zero-tailpipe emission bike lanes in the burbs to go with it?
Lord Mayor.
Well, okay. Does anyone guess what percentage of the council budget was spent in the suburbs this financial year? 86%. So, look, the reality is, no administration has invested more in those type of things that benefit the suburbs. Because our record on this is very clear and it's consistent. And what's more, no administration has invested more in public transport improvements than our administration, and no administration has invested more in active travel than this side of politics. And so, I do recall the day when the other side was in power, and they... Yeah, well, it was a long time ago. But their investment in active transport, so bikeways and other active transport infrastructure, in an entire term was something like $25 million. And we increased that year after year, budget after budget. And now, on top of all of the work that's been done in the suburbs, on bikeways and connections right across the city. And there are councillors right across this chamber on both sides that have had fantastic bikeways built in their ward. And that has been a continuing process. But now we're also seeing the single biggest investment in active transport that has ever been made within one term, the construction of two green bridges. In one term, in a four-year period, two green bridges being built. And so, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge is under construction. The Breakfast Creek Green Bridge, construction will gear up very shortly. The tender has been awarded. And so, both of those major assets will be constructed within one term. But I've got to say, it's value for money, too, because while councillor Cassidy talks about somehow these being unnecessary projects, the Kangaroo Point Bridge will be delivered for less than the Toowoomba Quarantine Facility. You know that wonderful facility that never got used and sits there? And taxpayers are funding it? The Kangaroo Point Bridge is cheaper than that! So it's great value for money because it will deliver a lasting legacy. Not throwing $200 million away for no benefit, but investing $190 million, that will last for generations. And we'll see generations of people use it, thousands of people using this asset, and taking thousands of car trips off the road as well. Helping to deliver a more sustainable city, helping to deliver a city with less congestion, and also a more active and healthy city. A city where residents have real options to ditch the car and either go on foot, or on bike, or on scooter to create a better city. So we'll continue our record investment in those projects. And we are very proud of the record in the suburbs and in active travel and in public transport. Because no single administration in the history of the city has invested more in those things than our side of politics.
Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. My question's to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the Shrima Council is working hard to be the cleanest, greenest, most sustainable city in Australia, and partnering with local environment groups is crucial to reaching this outcome. Could you please update the chamber on the recent round of funding delivered to these groups? Including what projects are being funded?
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Mr Acting Chair. And through you, I'd like to thank councillor Mackay for the question, because I know how passionate councillor Mackay is about working with his local residents and community groups to get environmental outcomes in his local area. Mr Acting Chair, the Shrima Council has committed to more than $1.2 million in sustainability and environmental grants this term through the Lord Mayor's Community Sustainability and Environmental Grants Programme. In December last year, the first round of grants was awarded to recipients in the native wildlife care and cultivating community gardens category. Today, I'm excited to advise the chamber that the second round recipients in the Grants Programme for Environmental and Sustainability categories have been announced. More than 20 community groups will share in nearly $200,000 to support the work that they do in local communities that contribute directly to our environmental and sustainability targets across our city. Under the Sustainability category, financial assistance of up to $10,000 has been awarded to community organisations for projects that reduce their emissions and energy consumption. This is just one of the many ways the Shrima Council is committed to reducing emissions across Brisbane, contributing to our carbon-neutral status. The funding will support community groups such as Mount Bravat Lipiteri Society, C&amp;K Kedron and Newmarket to install solar panels on their facilities, while groups such as the Salisbury and Chirmside Bowls Clubs will receive grants to upgrade their lighting systems to more energy-efficient LED lighting. Not only will these projects ensure they're operating more sustainably and reducing their impact on the environment, but will also help to reduce their power bill, which is one of the most significant operational costs of community organisations. Mr Acting Chair, this round of grants also provides funding under the Environment category. Funding of up to $20,000 is provided to community groups to undertake works that address local or citywide environmental issues. Council has more than 9,500 hectares of natural areas in ownership that requires constant management and rehabilitation. And in partnership with council, the work undertaken by these groups ensures our natural environment is constantly preserved and restored to contribute to our biodiversity. Community groups can apply for funding for on-ground projects that are undertaken on council land, while also being able to apply for any operational and administrative expenses incurred, so long as their group has an environmental focus within the Brisbane local government area. As part of this round of grants, groups such as Mount Nebo and Mount Glorious Environmental Protection Association will receive funding for environmental restoration and weed mitigation. I know you'll be pleased, councillor Mackay, that the St Lucia Golf Course Bush Care Group in your ward have received support to undertake weed management in Sandy Creek. I understand this morning, councillor Marks, you had an opportunity to visit with B4C to see the work that they're doing in Belimba Creek. The work that B4C have been doing is excellent, managing weeds and revegetating with planting. That supports our biodiversity in our creeks. Mr Acting Chair, of course, round two builds on the grants that were awarded in December last year. I'd like to provide an update on some of the round one projects that have commenced since December. Under the native wildlife and care category, funding is received to support rescue rehabilitation and release of orphaned, sick and injured native wildlife. The Bat Conservation and Rescue Group has been able to purchase fruit, milk and medical supplies to care for orphaned flying foxes injured by car strikes, while Orphan Native and Animal Reher and Release Association have been able to purchase a humidity crib. This humidity crib is used to support pinkies, which are baby animals that do not have fur yet, that have also been orphaned. Something like that, councillor Marks. The Shrima Council recognises that community gardens that are established in line with council guidelines in the right way help support our vision for a clean, green and sustainable city. As part of the cultivating community grants category, the Sandgate and Bracken Ridge Action Group have been able to purchase wheelbarriers and garden bed edges for their community garden at the Deegan Racecourse. But this is not the final opportunity for community groups to apply for grants, with the next rounds being announced later this year. So I encourage all councillors in the chamber to advocate for their local community groups and organisations to apply and to keep an eye out on council's website for more details of when the grants are open. Mr Acting Chair, this is just one of the many ways that the Shrima Council is supporting the work of our community groups across Brisbane to create a cleaner, greener and more sustainable city.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Further questions? Councillor Sri was to his feet first. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the... I was going to ask a different question about buses and bike lanes, but I don't want to be accused of trolling. Questions about housing affordability and the rising concerns about short-term accommodation. The best available data on the public record suggests there are around 3,800 homes, that's full homes, not bedrooms, that are currently being rented out on Airbnb in Brisbane. 3,800 entire homes. And then there are also hundreds more homes listed on other similar booking platforms like Stays, Booking.com, et cetera. So we're talking thousands and thousands of dwellings which were designed to be long-term residential accommodation, but which are now being used as short-term accommodation in the middle of a housing crisis. You've acknowledged the good work that NUSA has done in significantly restricting Airbnbs within the Nusa Shah council region. And I just wanted an update from you as to what further steps this council administration is taking to ensure that we can reverse the trend of residential accommodation being converted into short-term accommodation.
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sri, for the question. That's not trolling. That's a good and legitimate question. And so I thank you for that. And look, you generally have a pretty good record in asking good and reasonable questions. So, look, you do know, based on previous discussions, including the one that we had at the council of mayors' council a day, I think it was last year. Time flies. Yeah, it was last year, where we discussed this issue. Look, I do understand the importance of making sure that there are longer-term options available for people in the rental market, and that's a challenge at the moment, just because of the supply and demand challenges, which means that there is limited rental vacancies available at the moment. So, as I told you in our conversation, I'm happy to investigate ways in which council can respond to that. Certainly, I don't believe that those short-stages should...
Certainly, I don't believe that those short-stays should be banned. I think that there is a role for them, but there can also be priorities placed on other forms of accommodation that are longer term. And so I'm happy to have a look at that, and that's something that we'll be considering. Stay tuned, councillor Sri, on this. There may be something even in the next budget relating to this, but obviously it's something we're working through, but we do understand the issue and we're working on a solution.
Councillor Landis?
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shrima Council has a strong track record in funding local community groups throughout the city. Could you please update the chamber on some recent funding commitments made by the administration, including how they will help support local clubs?
Councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Acting Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Landis for the question. As all of those present in the chamber today know, the past two months have seen the incredible strength and resilience of our city's passionate and valued sports clubs on full display across the city. The Shrima Council deeply recognises the important and hard-working sporting groups and what they do across Brisbane to foster a resilient, connected and healthy city. Over the past few weeks, it's been incredible to see so many sporting clubs across Brisbane return to the field and continue to provide the great community experience they foster for their members. Sporting clubs are critical parts of local communities in Brisbane because they help people of all ages be active and involved in their local area. And the Community and Sport Partnership Programme is just one of the many ways the Shrima Council helps clubs thrive and meet the growing demand for their valued services. The Community and Sport Partnership Programme sees council partner with sports clubs on council lease sites to help fund significant improvements to enhance facilities, ensuring that they are fit for purpose and can meet the increasing demand for sporting participation. In this round of the programme, council funding will help three different sports associations undertake significant infrastructure upgrades to their much-loved sports facilities. This funding will see Downey Park Netball Association convert eight of their existing grass netball courts to hardstand courts. It will see Sandgate Redcliffe District Cricket Club upgrade their practice cricket nets at Deegan Sports Ground Park, and West Mitchellton Rugby League Football Club carry out improvement works, including irrigation, soil and turf upgrades to their playing fields three and four. This programme invests more than $6.6 million over four years to upgrade community sites across Brisbane and represents a great example of collaboration between council, peak sporting bodies and sporting organisations to deliver better facilities for the residents of Brisbane. Previous recipients of this programme include Wyndham Wolves Football Club, G P S Rugby League and Valley District Cricket Club, all of whom are working hard to deliver better facilities for their members across Brisbane. The success of this programme so far is due in no small part to the hard work done by our sports and recreation officers, who work hand-in-hand with our local sporting clubs across the city. Our sport and recreation officers have worked exceptionally hard over the past few weeks to get our sports clubs back on their feet and have been instrumental in supporting our clubs apply for and receive funding under our Community Facility Disaster Relief Payment Programme. We knew that during the cleanup phase of the city's disaster recovery, many community cultural and sporting organisations needed immediate support to make their facilities safe, conduct minor repairs and return to operations. Through the Community Facility Disaster Relief Payment Programme, community organisations operating from or located within a council leased or licensed community facility that was impacted by the severe weather event were able to access a $5,000 payment in as little as two weeks after the flooding event. We know that this funding has been used for a variety of recovery projects, including engaging electricians, extensive cleanup of debris and mud and to start repair work of playing fields across Brisbane.
Councillor Howard? I'm sorry, that's the end of question time. Thank you. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee recommendations, please.
Mr Acting Chair, I move the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the autumn recess 2022 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the autumn recess of 2022 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted. Lord Mayor?
Point of order. Excuse me.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes. I would ask that with respect to item B, the contracts and tendering report, that the Lord Mayor advises which of these contracts, if any, are related to flood recovery works?
Thank you. Lord Mayor?
We'll get that clarification. Thank you, councillor Johnson. I suspect that it would be few. This is the February report, so obviously the flood didn't happen until the very end of February, but I'll get some clarification. I suspect councillor Cunningham will be able to confirm that. Before moving on to these items, I did want to point out, as most councillors know, actually I think all councillors know, this month is cystic fibrosis month, and you'll see the councillors proudly wearing the pins for 65 Roses campaign. This annual campaign works hard to boost awareness about cystic fibrosis and the impact it has on so many members of the community. The disease affects thousands of Australians and infects a person's lungs, digestive systems and other organs as well. Regrettably, every four days, a child is born with cystic fibrosis, and most will not live past their twenties. There is no current cure for the disease. Later this month, all of our council assets will be lit up in the colour red to support this campaign, and obviously I'll report, as I always do in the council meeting, on the date that will occur. But thank you once again to all of those councillors who are wearing the pin today. Your support is important. We had, obviously recently, Anzac Day commemorated in our city in various ways, right across the suburbs, in many locations, and I'll thank all councillors for their participation in those Anzac Day commemorations. Obviously, Anzac Day is not about glorifying war. It never has been about glorifying war, but it is such an important part of Australian culture and the, I guess, the way that Australians view their role in this country and in this world. And it was great to see so many people coming out despite the rain. It wasn't the best day for an Anzac Day parade or for services, but to see so many people marching and so many spectators coming out honoring those who have served, I just want to particularly pay tribute. I also wanted to mention three people in the parade in particular. Councillor Mackay marched in the parade. Councillor McGlocklin, unfortunately, is not here. He marched in the parade as well. And also my chief of staff, Chris Anstey, who was a former army brigadier, marched in the parade. He'll be very embarrassed that I mention him, but it is such an important day for our community, and thank you to everyone for their role in commemorating that day. Last week, we also had the very first meeting of the Brisbane Games, or the 2032 Games Organising Committee. At the meeting, we had the 21-strong board come together for the first time, together with the new president, Andrew Liveras, and it was a good start and a productive meeting for that group of people. Since then, we've had another member added to the board. So on the weekend, we had a process in Sydney where the Australian Olympic Committee had to choose a new president. Their president, obviously, for the last 30-plus years was John Coates, and he stepped down, did a fantastic job over a long period of time, and rightly had a tribute function or a testimonial function on Saturday night for his amazing contribution to sports and the Olympic movement, not only in Australia, but also around the world, as vice president of the International Olympic Committee. But also a critical player in making sure that the ducks were all lined up for the IOC to choose Brisbane as the 2032 host city. I have no doubt that John was absolutely critical behind the scenes in talking to colleagues, and while we weren't able to lobby as part of our bid, I have no doubt he did lots of chats with lots of people that helped get the right result. And so that was a journey that started with him in, I think, 1985 or 1986, when he came to Brisbane to lead the Olympic bid for the 1992 Olympic Games, which went to Barcelona. And he had, until now, unfinished business in Brisbane, and he has successfully helped, together with so many different cooperative parties and stakeholders, deliver the outcome where we are the host city in 2032. And I want to add my thanks and pay tribute to John Coates for what has been a sterling contribution to our city and to Olympism, the Olympic movement. And I would say that even though he's not the president anymore of the AOC, he will still retain a seat on the OCOG board for Brisbane 2032, so he'll still be around and will still benefit from his wisdom. He was replaced by the AOC, well, the vote of the AOC, by Ian Chesterman. Ian Chesterman is also incredibly experienced and served as John Coates' deputy for, I think, 16 years, speaking from memory. And so we have another experienced person who is joining the board and contributing. Ian Chesterman was traditionally a Winter Olympics person and served as the Shefter Mission in multiple Winter Olympics. For the very first time in Tokyo, he served as the Shefter Mission for a Summer Olympics, and he has obviously got the support of the AOC to become their new president. So I wish him well, look forward to working with him. There's a lot to do, and we're now underway and moving forward. As we speak, there are IOC representatives in South East Queensland having a look at the different facilities that we have that are planned for 2032. And so they were here yesterday, they remain in South East Queensland today and tomorrow, and that's been a productive set of discussions that are happening. So that work is ongoing, and it's an exciting time. You know, that now that the board has formed, we're getting on with it and moving forward. The other thing that's happened in recent times that I really should mention is a proposal came out from the State Government Department of Local Government for expenditure caps on election expenditure for local government. Now, this discussion paper came out, and obviously people are aware of my views on that, but I did want to thank the deputy premier for his response. So he has been fantastic in, I guess, listening to the concerns that have been raised, and I do hold a lot of hope and confidence that we will get a fair outcome out of this process. So I do want to remind everyone that the submissions on this discussion paper are open until the end of May, I think the 27th of May, from memory, and that is something that we should all take an interest in, because a fair election is absolutely essential for local government right across Queensland, and particularly in Australia's largest council here in Brisbane. And so thank you once again to the deputy premier for his listening ear and his willingness to achieve a positive outcome, and we look forward to achieving that outcome. I did want to say, though, that on this side of the chamber, we do support expenditure caps, so the principle of expenditure caps is something we support, but it just has to be fair. It just has to be reasonable, and so we'll be working to help achieve that outcome together with the state government. I mentioned the lighting up of council assets each week in this place. Last night, the Victoria Bridge, Story Bridge, Tropical Dome and Radcliffe Place was lit up in the colour green to support Lung Health Awareness Month. Lung disease affects 7 million Australians, and this is the second-leading cause of death in our country. Tonight, all of those same assets will be lit purple, blue and yellow to show our support for Bladder Cancer Awareness Month. And lighting up of these assets obviously helps to raise awareness about bladder cancer, which affects more than 5,000 Australians each year. Tomorrow night, the Tropical Dome, Radcliffe Place, Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in the colour purple to support Domestic Violence Remembrance Day and also the Candlelit Vigil. Tomorrow is a day to remember those who have lost their lives as a result of domestic and family violence, and we absolutely support this cause and this campaign. This Thursday marks the 80th anniversary of the Battle of the Coral Sea. And to...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension. Seconded.
An extension has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landis. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Just one moment before you rise to your feet again, Lord Mayor. Councillors, if there's any conversations to be had, could they please be removed to the antechamber? Thank you. Lord Mayor?
Thank you. This Thursday marks the 80th anniversary of the Battle of the Coral Sea, and it is also a reminder that when it comes to the war in the Pacific, the role of Brisbane played as headquarters to the Pacific, South West Pacific effort, and also the fact that there was war on our doorstep. I mean, when you go past Morton Bay, you hit the Coral Sea. You're not in the Pacific Ocean, you're in the Coral Sea. And 80 years ago, a critical milestone battle was held in the Coral Sea together with our allies, and to remember this occasion, the Story Bridge, the Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in the colour blue. Battle took place between the 4th and the 8th of May 1942, and obviously that battle helped forge the strong alliance that exists to this day between the United States and Australia. On Friday, our assets will be lit up in the colour yellow to celebrate Wishbone Day. Wishbone Day is an international awareness day. Okay. Osteogenesis imperfecta, also known as brittle bone disease. Did I say that right? Close enough? The day draws awareness to the lies of those living with the disease, including the challenges and solutions to living a full and happy life. Saturday night, we'll see both the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge lit up in the colour blue for the eve of International Thala Semia Day, which is also another international awareness day, which raises awareness about the struggles of those that have this severe blood disease, including remembering those who have died from the disease too. And finally, this Sunday marks World Ovarian Cancer Day, and we'll be lighting up our assets in Teal. 1,600 women are diagnosed with ovarian cancer in Australia each year, and regrettably, only 46% survive more than five years after contracting it. And finally, I just wanted to say that today is the last day for a very dedicated and much-loved council manager, Shane Hackett. Shane is currently in the role of manager of customer services, and he's recently been successful in the role of group manager, customer and cultural services at Redlands City Council. So he's been poached. This is an incredible opportunity for Shane, and the successful appointment is a dedication, testament to his dedication to council, with over 27 years of service in 22 different roles. And for those of you who have had something to do with Shane, you'll know that he's known not only for his professionalism as an employee and as a manager, but also his bright, cheerful personality and sort of can-do attitude, you know, just keen to get on with it and get things done. Shane joined council in 1997 in local planning and then moved into the bikeways team. He then held various roles in community engagement, neighbourhood planning, waste resources, parks and natural resources, connected communities and finished up in customer service. It's been a pleasure to work with Shane, and I know I speak on behalf of everyone who's worked with him, and we wish him all the best in his new role. Item A in the reports in front of us is the report of the Audit Committee meeting from 24th of March 2022, and this is the... And this is the independent audit committee, which meets periodically to review council's internal audits and reports on operational risk and control measures. Throughout the year, council works with the Audit Committee and the Queensland Audit Office to ensure we meet all of our audit requirements. And this can be seen in the report in front of us today, where the committee received updates from the CEO, CFO, Chief Legal Counsel, Chief Internal Auditor and the QAO. Matters discussed, as outlined in the minutes, included our flood response and also the De Jersey review that's currently underway. The QAO spoke to their auditing activities on various accounting matters. And the work of this committee continues to be incredibly important and one that we take very seriously. Item B is the Contracts and Tendering Report for February 2022. In this report, 21 out of the 23 contracts were awarded to South East Queensland-based businesses, which is 91% of contracts, exceeding our target of 80%. In the financial year-to-date, we've seen over 430 contracts awarded to local South East Queensland-based businesses. And the spend so far year-to-date on these contracts is $669 million. That's a significant investment and injection into our local economy and local jobs and supporting local families. In this particular set of contracts, we're excited to see the construction of three new Ninja Courses. So Council Mackay, take a bow. You had the first one in Brisbane. It's been loved so much that we decided to roll out several more. This was a commitment we made and we're pleased to be rolling out. And that includes the Dalton Street Park in Callumvale, Tarolba Park in Everton Park and the Whitesill Reserve in Camp Hill. And so I'm sure they will be all loved as much as the original one in Guyat Park, St. Lucia. And we look forward to continuing our record investment in parks right across the city, right across the city. So we also see the construction of the Nudgy Recreation Reserve and certainly the initial stages of that and Enerjex relocation works to facilitate the Beams Road upgrade, which is really important. I can confirm in response to Council Johnston's question that, as you know, the river peaked on the 28th of February and the contracts report was considered by delegates prior to this time. So from the March report onwards, you'll start to see some contracts associated with the flood recovery and response work. Item C, and I touched on this briefly already, the Beams Road upgrade. So the Beams Road upgrade comes in a number of parts, all of which are very important. One, which is the corridor upgrade, which we're conducting in partnership with the Morrison Government to the tune of $50 million from their contribution. The total cost of the project is $73 million and so a critical part. And then we see also the Beams Road Open Level Crossing Replacement or Elimination Project progressing along as well. So our aim is that these projects will see significant improvements along the corridor, making travel much more convenient but also safer, which is critical, reducing delays but also supporting active travel as well with significant upgrades to the cycling and pedestrian infrastructure along the corridor as well. And item C is carrying out some land resumptions that are required to allow the upgrade to go ahead. Thank you, Council.
Any further councillors? Council Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Acting Chair. Can I ask that all three items be taken serious item for voting? Thanks.
Thank you.
The first item is the Report of the Audit Committee, which is the same garbage we get each and every time this committee meets. No transparency, no information at all contained in this report. The LMP avoids transparency like the plague. What we do see is that the committee discuss certain things, pertinent things to the financial health and the security of council. But as non-administration councillors, we have no ability to know what was said about those issues and what was discussed in those meetings. So it's not acceptable to treat the decision-makers of council in this way. So we won't be supporting this report once again today until they are changed. The Contracts and Tendering Report before us today outlines, particularly in 15 of those contracts, the increasing rate of contracting out and outsourcing by this LMP administration. And this, this report details $60 million worth of basic work being contracted out. Starting at item two is the $23 million contract for the Nudgy Recreation Reserve District Park project. Now, this is the one that the LMP administration, the LMP Lord Mayor and the local LMP councillor, Adam Allen, gutted. After promising the community one thing, they went in and gutted this project. This, this is the project that this LMP administration promised would include a dog park, a BMX track, exercise equipment, but none of that is being built. And on top of that, the existing dirt BMX track is being demolished. So not only are they not delivering on what they promised out in the suburbs, they're actually removing, they're taking things away from, from communities in the outer suburbs, which is so typical of this LMP administration. Of course, they handle these projects, whether they're small or large, so poorly that it inevitably leads to cost blowouts and cuts to these basic projects. The projects, of course, that don't get cut back but also have massive cost blowouts are the likes of the metro and the inner-city footbridges that are being built in the inner city while the suburbs forget, are forgotten. Residents simply aren't getting value for money for their rates under this current LMP administration. They're paying more and getting less. People are okay to pay their rates when they know they get a decent return out in the suburbs. But what we see before us today in this Contracts and Tendering Report is more confirmation that under this LMP administration, this tired, old, 20-year-old LMP administration, that the only thing that goes up is their rates, not the services and facilities out in the suburbs. There's a couple of park upgrades, including, as we've heard, the Ninja Warrior Courses. We know the, the track record when it comes to, in an LMP area, of course. We know the track record of this LMP administration when it comes to sourcing playground equipment. We see that brought in from all over the world, supporting manufacturing in Europe and Asia, but never supporting manufacturing here in South East Queensland. So we have no faith that these playgrounds will be made using equipment manufactured here in Australia. We also see another $5.1 million being contracted out for road resurfacing, the basics. The basics that people expect of council and they would expect would support long-term ongoing jobs here, but instead, these are being contracted out to labour hire companies in turn supporting insecure work here in Brisbane. This, of course, could be $5.1 million being spent on supporting secure work, which is so important. Item 13 is a contract with Volgren for bus maintenance and spare parts. Now, this is the, this is the LMP's consolation prize and a real slap in the face for Brisbane workers because we had a 30-year partnership with Brisbane Manufacturers, with Volgren and their predecessors, to build our buses. But this LMP Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrinna, single-handedly killed that partnership when he started ordering those electric buses from China and from Europe instead of supporting local manufacturing here in Brisbane and supporting local manufacturing jobs. Highly skilled, very important jobs to our local economy. And in one fell swoop, they were gone because this LMP administration decided they wanted to order buses from China and from Europe. This is a real insult to our bus builders. This LMP mayor cares more about jobs in Beijing and Switzerland than he does about jobs here in Brisbane. Clause C is the Beams Road upgrade. And the, this has come to council before, but the point of contention in this item before us today is the resumption of a number of properties and the subdivision of council land for, on land which is currently leased by the Kubara Kindi. And so residents, some residents have raised a number of concerns in relation to the impact of the road project and the resumption of their property in the papers before us. We certainly hope that this LMP administration takes those concerns into account and does pay a fair price and agrees upon a decent settlement with those private residences as well. Then we also call on the administration to make sure that the operations and the long-term viability of Kubara Kindi is not impacted on as a result of this project. That is a sensitive site, given it's a former sewage treatment plant and those tanks from the former sewage treatment plant are in some, some cases only barely metres below the ground. And the, the site, the part of the site that is able to be used by the Kindi for their long-term purposes is very small and very narrow. Sort of make sure that this road project doesn't impact on that after they had to fight so hard to get that, to get that long-term lease in place only in recent months. So we certainly don't hold our breath, but we would encourage the LMP administration to meet all its commitments in regards to the Beams Road upgrade.
Further debate? Council Cunningham. Can you turn your mic?
Oops, sorry about that.
It's all right.
I rise to speak just briefly on item A. A lot of work is done behind the scenes by the Independent Audit Committee to make sure there is effective management of this council on behalf of Brisbane ratepayers. Legislative Lee, the Audit Committee is an advisory committee of council, required by an established under the City of Brisbane Act and the City of Brisbane Regulation. The Audit Committee operates without any political interference or presence of councillors. It considers the continuous improvement of council systems, processes and controls. The current Audit Committee members were appointed following an independent external recruitment process. There are currently three Independent Audit Committee members, including the Audit Committee Chair. There is nothing secretive about the meetings, Mr Acting Chair. All actions identified have clear accountability and dates are monitored. Representatives from the Queensland Audit Office also always attend the meetings to ensure requirements are being met and that preparation is occurring for the end of financial year. It's like Christmas in budget time when the end of financial year, it's just like Christmas, isn't it? At this most recent meeting, council's response to the floods was also discussed as well as governance of council's controlled entities. I'd like to offer my thanks to the committee, who often don't get thanked, and they are essentially tasked with wearing the black hat every day. They provide ongoing assistance to ensure council gets the best outcome for our ratepayers. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any further speakers? See no one standing? Oh, Council Allen.
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. I rise to speak on item B, Contracts and Tendering, and in particular, Contract Number One, the Nudgy Recreation Reserve. And it's great to have the opportunity to provide an update on this exciting project, which will provide enhanced sport and recreation facilities for the local community in the Nudgy area. The project will transform an old landfill site into a first-class sport and recreation facility for the growing local community. This project has been in the planning for a number of years now, so it is very encouraging to see that the project is now getting underway with initial works having commenced. Initial works will include compacting soil, installing systems to capture and treat any liquids draining from the site and capping the land to ensure it continues to be safe for future use. The project phasing will include site remediation, then hard infrastructure followed by soft infrastructure. In the past fortnight, local residents will have received a flyer, I've got a copy here. And this outlines the initial works and how they may get additional information on this project. The flyer also outlined council's intention to fully deliver the project as planned. And a plan of the site elements are included on this flyer. And contrary to Councillor Cassidy's assertion, this has been the same plan that has been shared with the community for over a year now. Council will continue to keep the community informed as this project progresses. While this is undoubtedly an exciting project, it is not the only project that has been delivered in the Nudgy area in recent times. There have been quite a number of park upgrades in this area in recent years, including St. Vincent's Road Park and most recently, the Nudgy Waterholes Reserve. Mr Acting Chair, the only people talking down this project are the opposition. They are displaying their political bias and also shining a spotlight on their complete lack of understanding of the procurement and contracting process. They also appear to be blind to the realities of the environment in which council is operating and indeed, many businesses are operating at this time. I look forward to steady progress on this project, which is expected to be completed in late 2023, weather and site conditions permitting. I look forward to joining the community in due course on completion of the project to experience these facilities for themselves. These facilities support a key objective of the Shrinna Council, to provide the community with more to see and do and support a healthier lifestyle. This will be a great community asset for many years to come. Thank you, Mr Acting Chair.
Thank you, Council Allen. Further speakers? Council Johnson.
Yes, just very briefly, on item B, the Reports, Contracts and Reports. I listened to the Lord Mayor with some interest, talking about some of these items and thank him for his clarification about the flood expenditure. I'll be looking at the next report for that information as well. It's fabulous when the LMP can talk about all the things they're doing in the LMP wards, but not in other wards in Brisbane. And there's two items on here of interest. The first, the Lord Mayor did give some details on, and that was the designer-construction of Ninja Courses, various sites, $455,000, so half a million dollars for Ninja Courses. There's one at Callumvale, Everton Park and Camp Hill. Does anybody know what those three suburbs have in common? Yeah, marginal. Anything else they might have in common?
Could it be LMP?
Could it be? LMP wards, yes, Councillor Griffiths. And I note that Councillor, I know, I note that Councillor McLaughlin, oh, sorry, Councillor Mackay was acknowledged as having a Ninja Course in his area at Guyat Park. So there's a fourth one in an LMP area. And I, I, I don't have one. I don't have one.
Councillors, councillors, the speaker will be heard in silence. And if we are addressing any other speakers in the chamber, can it please be done through the chair?
I'm not 100% sure who it was. It was either, I think, Councillor Davis, Councillor Hammond or Councillor Landers that interjected and said, I wonder why. Let's be clear that whichever councillor decided to interject there, which interjecting is not allowed, of course, but that interjection's perfectly fine, they're elected to govern for the whole city. But this administration only governs for itself. It's not interested in governing for the parts of the city in wards that it does not hold. And it's interesting, isn't it, that the Lord Mayor's vote has gone down, down, down and down and continues to go down in my ward and in other wards around the city. The residents are not-
Sorry, Councillor Johnson, people's voting records is not in the report. Can I pull you back to the report, please? Thank you.
Well, I'm definitely talking about the report, which is-
No, you were talking about the way people were voting and where people's margins were going. Can I pull you back to the report, please? Thank you.
And the way people are voting reflects the fact that this administration is not spending money in all the wards around the city. And the evidence of that here before us today is yet another three parks projects, half a million dollars in public funding, are going into marginal LMP wards. And someone might help me out here a little bit, I think, with this as well. I know that Councillor Adams' ward is extremely marginal. She was lucky to hang on last time. Everton Park, I'm not 100% sure about. It might be the safest of the three. And certainly, I know Angela Owen has, has run her margins right down and she was very lucky to hang on at the time. So it is fascinating-
Councillor Johnson, remember you agreed not to talk about margins because it wasn't in the report. I'm quite happy for you to talk to the report, but margins are not in the report, I'm sorry.
And I'm talking to the suburbs that are in the report.
And I would like you to point out in the report where people's voting margins are.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order. Councillor Shree.
I do think it is within scope and relevance for the item to talk about-
Councillor Shree, I don't uphold your point of order and I don't think it's within-
You haven't even let me finish my sentence.
I don't think it's within the scope of the report to be talking about people's margins. It's not in the report.
Didn't even let me finish my sentence.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
It's a robust political environment we work in here, isn't it? You pork barrel in your own wards and we're not allowed to talk about it. That's what the LMP are up to. So thank you so much, Mr Deputy Chairman, for highlighting my point, that you don't want to talk about how you pork barrel in your own electorates, because that's what this expenditure is all about, funding LMP pork in marginal LNP wards. Now, I'm just interested in whether anybody on this side of the chamber has got- has got a Ninja course in their ward.
No.
No one? Does anybody know how many Ninja courses we have in Brisbane overall? I know there's at least four. Are they all in LNP wards? Now I understand, Mr Deputy Chairman, why you're running interference for the LMP. It seems that there are four, maybe six Ninja courses, all in LNP wards. Now, talk about governing for the whole of the city. I think that's a pretty shameful experience. But let's move on, because it's not just once that this has happened. It's not just an accident that this has happened. Let's move on to the next contract. Design and construction of scooter tracks. Now, there's over a million dollars for scooter tracks. We'll get to that councillor Strunk, I see your hand up, that's good, I'm very pleased. I'd be very interested to know where these scooter tracks are going, because council's never funded a scooter track in my ward. I've had to fund them out of our local trust funds, which I've been happy to do. But it would appear that there's a million dollars for scooter tracks. Now, I saw councillor Strunk put up his hand, so Anawa, I'd be thinking? Richlands, okay. I'm not going to begrudge Richlands. There's a very family oriented area that I'm sure desperately needs new infrastructure for families out there. But I'm very interested in where else these scooter tracks might be going. Does anybody have any other ideas? Would they be in, say, marginal LNP wards? Is it Tara Gindi? Is it Tara Gindi? So let's be clear, the marginal LNP ward that councillor Adams has is getting not only a Ninja course, it's also getting a scooter track. Oh, the good burgers of Tara Gindi. I mean, it didn't really work, did it? I mean, she's got everything that opens and shuts and her margin's going the other way. So it's fascinating, isn't it? Perhaps that might work in reverse, that if they did start building some infrastructure in Tennyson Ward, maybe their vote would go up. And maybe that's a new strategy to try, because the strategy that you have been trying of pork barreling in your own wards and excluding wards in the city that desperately need new infrastructure, that's clearly not working. It's hurting you, it's hurting the rest of the city, and it is an extremely bad look when you are prepared to ignore hundreds of thousands of residents who vote for the Lord Mayor, but he won't support them with local projects in our community. And it's just projects like this that just make it really clear. So there's one and a half million dollars of expenditure for five park projects. One is in a Labour ward. That's pretty shameful.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Are there any further speakers? councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just would like to make a contribution on item C, the Beams Road resumption papers in front of us today, the Beams Road Upgrade Notes on item C. Now, the Beams Road Upgrade is a principal piece of roadwork, and the Beams Road transport corridor itself runs from Ridley Road all the way over through Tagham, through much of the width of the northern ends of the city. The work that we're discussing today goes from Lacey Road to Handford Road, Lacey Road at the Castledyne Bracket Ridge End and Handford Street, the Tagham End. And this work is about making this road, which carries an awful lot of traffic east-west, up to the standard that we would expect. There's a significant amount of works on the intersections through that, whether it be Dorville Street, which we'll see a lot of work, and also upgrades to both the pedestrian and cycle facilities, the length of this project as well. And also, it's important at this point to remind the council that council is cooperating enthusiastically with the state government to ensure that their project of the open level crossing removal and the bridge over the train line there, that it is delivered. And we believe in that project. We're keen to support the state in the pursuit of that project, and we have been lending our technical expertise to them to ensure that that project is as good as it can possibly be. This paperwork in front of us is a milestone for the $70 million Beams Road project. It is the approvals to proceed for volumetric resumption. And can I please just make a general comment that I never find the resumption process comfortable and that I always feel for the people who we seek their land for important infrastructure such as this. But can I make a point that we wouldn't ask if it were not necessary to ensure that this thing, this road upgrade was done to a level that would benefit the community both today and for many, many years into the future? And I thank them for their cooperation in advance, and I thank the officers for their efforts leading up to this point and going forward. There is a small number of land, of a small number of properties that will require resumptions, and we've been in discussion with those landholders for some time.
councillor Wines, if you can hear us, we've lost you. We'll move on. Are there any further speakers? councillor Landis.
Thank you, Acting Chair. Just to follow on, I'm going to speak on Beams Road Upgrade as well. So I just wanted to add that now that we have an additional school on there, the Holy Spirit is now up and running there this year, that this project is even more vital in my community. The safer crossing, which is part of Stage One, has my residents very excited and of course, the school students as well, and the residents of Golden Downs Retirement Village, who see this as a great addition for them to have access, safer access to Fitzgibbon and to the Castledyne Train Station. Following the recent floods that damaged Strathpine Road at Gold Hills and also the damage to Linkfield Road Overpass, the Beams Road had to take up even more traffic. So the importance of this project has never been more clearer. And particularly the removal of the Dorville Road Roundabout, which will see installation of signals and provide a fairer and better flow of traffic in that area and importantly, a safer one. And just finally, Acting Chair, I want to acknowledge and thank the federal member for Petrie Luke Howarth and the Morrison Government for their support in funding this vital infrastructure project.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Yes, just seeking your ruling on item C, Luke Howarth isn't mentioned in this report, nor is the federal government, and I presume that you would like to rule this out of order.
Councillors on both sides of the chamber thank many levels of government for the contribution that they make. There was no-
So just to be clear then, it's okay to talk politically if you mention the LMP, but when I talk about it, you're not allowed to. Just want to be clear.
No.
If I talk about politics, you've told me I can't. But councillor Landis was talking about politics and you think that's okay?
I'll remind you that while I'm speaking, you do not, you do not speak while I'm speaking. Now councillor Landis did not make any reference to people's way of voting. She was thanking another level of government, as the Lord Mayor has done in this meeting today, for their contribution. Well, can you point out in the report where it says that? Thank you. And we'll move on. Lord Mayor.
No, this is my point, Mr Chairman, that the issue here is relevance, and you told me it was not relevant to talk about politics earlier today.
No, no, councillor Johnson, that is not what I said. What I said was, people's voting records and the way they vote is not in the report.
And I'm making the point that neither is Luke Howarth in the report, and I'm drawing that to your attention. And you've made it clear that I can't talk about certain things, and I'm just drawing to your attention that councillor Landis has just made similar remarks that are not in the report, and I'm seeking your ruling on whether that is also irrelevant.
Can I have a motion just for an adjournment, please?
Mr Acting Chair, I move for an adjournment for you to consider the ruling on councillor Johnson's point of order.
Thank you. Can I have a second, eh?
Seconded.
Thank you. An adjournment for five minutes has been given by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Landis. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, the ayes have it. With regard to the previous question asked by councillor Johnson, the involvement of the federal government as part funders is relevant to that particular part of the of the report, so I'll uphold that. councillor Landis, you may continue.
Thank you, Acting Chair. I was just going to say that I moved that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis and seconded by councillor Hutton that we adjourn for 15 minutes for afternoon tea once all councillors have left the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, the ayes have it. Are there any further speakers? Lord Mayor, wrap up.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you to the councillors who contributed. We heard some interesting contributions, but one of them that is always my favourite is that somehow there's some kind of problem in promising things and then delivering them. Because the Ninja courses were an election commitment, and it was a LNP Shriner team election commitment. And so apparently now it's outrageous that we would be delivering an election commitment. As were the scooter tracks. Having said that, councillor Adams is keen to point out that it was funded through her local suburban enhancement fund. But the reality is, we make commitments and we do our absolute best to deliver those commitments. And so the Ninja courses is one of many examples of those. We promised to build two green bridges in this term, and we are building two green bridges. We promised to deliver Brisbane Metro, and we are building Brisbane Metro. So we are determined to deliver on those commitments and invest right across the city and suburbs, as we're spending 86% of our budget in the suburbs. But I would point out that this whole debate about LMP wards and non-LMP wards, this is not something that we came up with. This is something that the people of Brisbane chose. If a particular area has an LMP councillor, it's because the people voted for an LMP councillor. Why? Because we deliver for our communities, as local councillors deliver for their local communities. And the people of Brisbane have chosen LMP councillors in 77% of the wards in the city. And as I said, this is not something that we installed ourselves in. This is something that is very democratic, and the people of Brisbane elected LMP councillors in 77% of council wards. The actual numbers, 20, there are 20 LNP councillors out of the 27, and out of the 26 wards, we have 19 of them. So it's, you know, it's a good, strong, plus 70% representation chosen by the people of Brisbane. So, you know, yeah, exactly. And we take that responsibility very seriously and we deliver. And so whether it's Ninja courses or scooter tracks, or whether it's green bridges or metro, whether it's a whole range of upgrades across the suburbs, we will continue to deliver for the people of Brisbane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Sorry. Oh, my apologies. Thank you. I did even have that written down. So we'll vote on item A. All those in favour of item A?
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. All those on item B?
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. All those on item C?
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. We'll now move on to the next report.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move, Mr Acting Chair. I move that the report of setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2022, on matters usually considered by that committee, be noted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of the council during the Autumn Recession 2022, on matters usually considered by that committee, be noted. Lord Mayor.
Yes, Mr Chair. Item A is the significant contracting plan for flood disaster recovery, repair of ferry terminals. And this enables council to get repair work on the flood damaged ferry terminals geared up. The SCP will engage with two key contractors and have the capability and previous experience necessary to repair our ferry terminals. Both contractors have previously been involved in the most recent dockside of Mowbray Park ferry terminal procurements. It is expected in the coming weeks the delivery team will have identified keyworks packages for major repairs, and that's mainly to repair the lead pier terminals. More broadly, the restoration of our ferry services has taken another step forward with the Hawthorn and New Farm ferry terminals back up and running, forming a triangle with the Tenerife Terminal. And so we'll continue to reactivate our ferry network as soon as we can. Obviously, if you look at, you know, the repair work, who better placed than those who also build ferry terminals? We had, I think, was a comparatively really good outcome in 2022 floods compared to what we saw in 2011, where seven terminals were destroyed completely. The terminals that were built post-2011 stood up to a massive beating with the amount of debris striking them. And yes, there was damage, but those terminals are still standing, and they can be put back into service without a full replacement, as we saw in 2011. Importantly, the two newest terminals opened just a matter of months before the flood. We saw the Howard Smith Wolves Terminal open in December last year, and we saw the South Bank Terminal open when councillor Murphy- South Bank Terminal was also December, was it? Or January? It was January. So just literally a month before the flood, new terminals at South Bank were opened. And those terminals stood up extremely well to the flood. So obviously, the way that they're designed, the construction methodology, and also those constructing the terminals is a positive thing. And so this will allow us to engage with those constructors to also do repair works. Item B is the authorisation of a person to make complaints under section 256 brackets 2K of the Building Act 1975. This relates to the obligations of owners of private buildings that have combustible cladding. Councillors would have seen work on many buildings around the city in their process of replacing combustible cladding, including Brisbane Square Building, where that work has been ongoing. The QBCC is the lead agency responsible for compliance of this matter of critical importance and safety, and the building regulation states that a person authorised by a local government may undertake prosecutions for non-compliance. The CEO and the commissioner of the QBCC wrote to council in March, seeking this authority from council. And obviously, we agree that these matters need to be addressed swiftly, and so we're more than happy to have them as the authorised person to take action on this particular matter of importance and safety. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Acting Chair. I just rise to speak on the store board submission on the significant contracting plan for flood disaster recovery and the repair of flood terminals, ferry terminals rather. There needs to be a thorough investigation into the issue of not moving city cats and ferries out of the river. There were multiple eyewitness accounts over that weekend, that flood weekend, the last weekend in February, which demonstrates the damage to many of these terminals was exacerbated by the fact that city cats were moored there, causing a larger buildup of debris. The ferries and city cats were taken out of the river in 2011. out of the river in 2011. The question remains, why were they not this time around? This LNP mayor has some serious questions to answer about his management of the floods, and particularly this aspect, which led to increased damage for our ferry terminals. And hopefully we get some information relating to this from the review being conducted by the Honourable Paul De Jersey in time.
Thank you, Councillor Cassidy. Further speakers?
Councillor Cunningham. I rise to speak briefly on item B, the authorisation of a person to make complaints under section 2562K of the Building Act. In March this year, the interim CEO and commissioner of the QBCC wrote to council requesting that council authorise the QBCC to prosecute offences committed under the Building Regulation. Following the Grenfell Tower tragedy, the state government introduced amendments to the Building Regulation to reduce the risks posed by combustible cladding. The amendments required owners of particular buildings to undertake an assessment of the material that they used on external walls in a three-part process. The QBCC is responsible for administering and regulating these obligations. QBCC's legal advice was that existing legislation doesn't contemplate offences against Part 4A of the Building Regulation, however that this authority to prosecute offences can be provided by council, to which this item addresses. So council is pleased to have been able to work really quickly to address this on the advice of the QBCC. It is of utmost importance that everyone fulfils their obligations when it comes to such a serious safety concern such as combustible cladding. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Cunningham. Councillor Murphy, did you have something to say? You do? You're more than welcome to take the microphone.
Thanks very much, Chair. I just wanted to speak to the Significant Contracting Plan for Flood Disaster Recovery, the repair of the ferry terminals. Chair, this is in support of the SCP following the February flood. Put simply, we are getting on with the job of getting our city cats back in the water. Already within eight weeks of the floods, we have three services in operation now, cross-river services at Bulimba and Tenerife, another cross-river service from West End to Gaia Park, and then a triangle service that's operating between Hawthorn, Tenerife and New Farm Park. Now, while every single one of our ferry terminals did receive some form of damage, we're in a much better position in 2022 than we were in 2011, when we completely lost seven terminals, and all of them had to be replaced over a painstaking and decade-long repair programme. This time around, all of our terminals remain in place. To give councillors an idea of some of the damage that was sustained, at our standard DDA upgrade terminals, there has been varying damage to balustrades, to glazing panels, fenders, electrical services, CCTV, and the emergency panic call points, as well as debris strikes, which means we've had to ensure the structural safety of the terminal. Our post-2011 flood recovery programme terminals are located in fast-flowing sections of the river that become especially dangerous during a flood. So it's not surprising that these terminals have sustained more damage, including the gangway mechanical systems, components of the internal articulated gangways, the swingback gangways, the land-based portal frames, lead pier lighting damage, CCTV, and emerging panic call points. So significantly greater and more complex engineering challenges on those terminals than the non-flood recovery terminals. I want to thank the travelling public for their patience as we try to get the full ferry network up and running. While some of our heavier-hit terminals are likely to take months to repair, I'm confident that we can run a network covering the river from end to end within the next six weeks. Which brings me to this SCP. Now, kudos, Chair, to our council officers who've moved very fast to survey and assess the damage to each terminal. Of course, they were aidfully assisted by Royal Australian Navy and Maritime Safety Queensland. So we know that we are dealing with a significant amount of damage. This SCP will allow council to engage with contractors, many of whom have been working recently on our new ferry terminal build programme. This SCP will enable direct engagement with two key marine contractors based on their capability, their experience, their expertise, and their access to the required marine equipment. Both contractors have delivered elements of council's ferry terminal network and have also been involved in the most recent dockside at Mowbray Park ferry terminal procurement exercise. There will also be smaller specialised procurement activities and marine specialists required to do work to the network. This will allow rapid access to smaller works, packages associated with more immediate make-safe and recovery-type works. In the coming weeks, the delivery team will have identified key packages for the major repair works for the flood recovery programme terminals, and look forward to updating-
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Shree.
Will councillor Murphy take a quick question?
Councillor Murphy, would you like to take a question?
Sure. Thanks. Sorry to interrupt through you, Chair. You mentioned aiming to have an end-to-end or end-river-to-end-river ferry service within about six weeks. Are there any terminals that you think probably won't be operating by then? Are there certain terminals that are going to be a lot longer to fix?
Councillor Murphy.
Sure. And thanks very much through you, Chair, to councillor Shree for the question. The reality is that Milton Ferry Terminal, Regatta Terminal, UQ Terminal and QUT Terminal have sustained significant damage to the landside abutments and infrastructure, and will likely take a longer period of time than the next six weeks to repair. In worst-case scenario, we're looking at six months potentially for those four terminals. Not saying that all four of them will take six months, but we may end up being at the end of the programme, taking six months to get the last one back up and running. I do want to foreshadow, in the same vein, councillor Shree, that these flood recovery tasks will affect the timeline for the delivery of the dockside and Mowbray Park terminals through you, Chair. This is an unavoidable consequence of contractor availability to perform flood recovery work on our terminals. In essence, there is only so much marine construction capacity available in the city of Brisbane at any one time, and we are still calculating what that time impact will be. And I will be, of course, updating the chamber and the relevant local councillors when I have a better understanding of that. Chair, Acting Chair, just in response to councillor Cassidy's assertions that he was making before around the ferries, the city cats that were in the river at the time of the flood, I have, I've literally, in this chamber, covered off on that. I've covered off on why things were different to the 2011 floods, why the city cats weren't moved. The problem is exactly the same problem that the Lord Mayor identified with councillor Cassidy before in the previous ENC. It's that he doesn't listen, or he willfully ignores the statements that we make in this chamber. And a good case in point is the fact that he has made those assertions and then just walked out of the chamber, not willing to hear the response. So if his staff are listening, maybe they will, they will very kindly look up the response that I have previously given to him when he's raised his issues in this chamber, and read them back to him for his information. My gut feeling, Chair, is that that won't make a difference, that the misinformation and the assertions-
Point of order, Chair.
-that he's making will continue, because it's not in his political interests.
Just in the interests of correcting misinformation, I'm wondering if councillor Murphy will be able to answer one more quick question?
Councillor Murphy?
Sure, Chair. Thanks. Sorry, that might have sounded more ominous than I intended it to. I was just wondering, with the vessels themselves, I know there was some damages, damage to the smaller ferries. What condition are they in, and are they all ready to go, get back on the water within the next month or so?
Through you, Chair, to councillor Shree, I can assure councillor Shree that all of the kitty cats are in good working order, and we'll be able to recommence city hopper services, as I suggested, within that six-week timeframe. I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Are there any further speakers? Being no one getting to their feet, we'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to the next agenda item, which is City Standards. Councillor Marks.
Mr Chair or Deputy Chair, I move that-
Councillor Marks, your microphone, please.
Sorry, I'm completely not ready, am I? Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of the council during the Autumn Recession 2022 on matters usually considered by City Standards Committee, be noted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Landers that the report setting out the decisions of the City Standards Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2022 on matters usually considered by the, oh, sorry, I've read this wrong.
That's okay.
Moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2022 on matters usually considered by City Standards Committee, be noted. My apologies for that.
That's okay, Mr Deputy Chair. So one of the the things that we had come through during recess was a petition requesting council take immediate action to cease the use of the Rage Cage Smash Room located at Nelson Street, Corinda. The response was sent back to the petitioners that that actually, they have already closed down and moved. And my understanding is they've moved to Ipswich, but I'm not 100% sure on that. But they certainly have closed from that location. I did have a couple of questions from committee this morning that I'd like to address now, if possible. Is road resurfacing in the Tinnison Ward for councillor Johnston. Berry Road, Berry Street, my apologies, is currently programmed to commence preparation works for resurfacing mid-May, and Fairfield Road is expected to commence in early June. There was a question about how many parks, playgrounds, and bikeways are still closed across the city. As I mentioned in committee, the problem we have with the new, you use the terminology of parks, people generally associate a park with anything that's got a playground in it. That's not the case. A park is basically anything that's got grass in it or some description, whether that's got playground equipment, or it's purely just green space, kick-around space, or even just bushland. So to be completely accurate, there are not any parks across the city that are fully closed. However, some nodes within those parks that were impacted by the 22 flood remain closed due to varying degrees of impact, such as the ones, we have 69 playgrounds. Now, they still require further rectification works to bring them back to operational standards, with some of these sustaining significant structural damage. Some of them could be as simple as the soft floor has washed away, and those who will have been listening in the chambers for more than some months now, we are suffering a shortfall on many, many items. Of one of them is what we use generally as the Takira bark. That comes down from Mackay, and that is in shortfall at the, sorry, that is a short demand at the moment. Obviously, Brisbane's not the only place that requires Takira bark. They're distributing it all over parts of Queensland that were affected. Obviously, we have a waitlist for that. Some of them could be the rubber resurfacing that we tend to put in in some of our playgrounds. Potentially, you can't see any damage to them, but it potentially, water has got underneath and has lifted up from underneath and caused a problem. We also need them to dry out completely. The UV light is one that kills any bacteria that potentially was come through on the water to those rubber resurfacing, so that all has to be re-inspected as well. Obviously, as always, we say children, safety comes first, that's children or adults, it doesn't matter who's using the playground. Bikeways was a much more significant damage, six sections of the Kedron Book Bike Way. I'm not actually familiar with this area, I haven't been out this way, but I have seen the photos, and I know councillor Wines has talked about this quite significantly, and it was mentioned earlier by the Lord Mayor. So the Walter Burke Park Crossing, the Uxbridge Street Embankment, the Grange Forest Park Crossing, Stafford City Crossing, Colva Crossing near Sandgate Road, Kalinga Park, and Diggers Drive rail underpress at Kalinga Park were all severely affected. And the photos I've seen, there's actually almost no Kedron Book Bike Way left. And then there's Little Cabbage Tree Creek Bike Way from Howera Court Bridge Connection, and the connection to Centenary Bike Way, Keringal Drive to Centenary Bike Way. So, as I said, some areas suffered significant damage that will take quite some time to be put back into place. They won't be covered by the federal funding, and a lot of them, also the lights that were along these bikeways, they're our infrastructure, they're not Enerjex or anybody else, so they're also our responsibility to replace. So hopefully that finishes and answers those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mark. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item A, it's the only item, which is the Rage Cage at Nelson Street, Corinda. Look, this has been a really difficult issue for the community. In the shopping precinct at Corinda, there are a number of character houses that form part of the district centre, and they're used for various purposes, as you might have mentioned, as you might understand, hairdresser, accountant, things like that. When the accountants moved out of this premises at 5 Nelson Street, the property was empty for quite some time, until a business known as the Rage Cage started last year, this time about a year ago. It's quite an extraordinary business. It's based on smashing things. Now, this is, as people might imagine, a two-storey, not fully enclosed character house. And this smashing was happening in the undercroft of the house downstairs, plates, white goods, just junk, basically, being smashed. It was happening at all hours of the day and night, and big dumpster bins were located in the backyard, the backyard which adjoined the neighbouring apartments and houses in the next street over. So what was a quiet use suddenly turned into this very noisy, destructive and violent sounding thing happening in this house. So the first thing that happened is residents rang me and the police, and when it was discovered that this was a business, we had to then look at what needed to be done to stop this business from operating. It's clearly not a suitable business to be operating in the premises. There was no soundproofing done, no entertainment permit was sought, and unfortunately, the district zoning provisions allowed pretty much any kind of use. So there was a problem. It looked for a while that council wasn't going to do anything, but the residents and I kept the pressure up. We did a petition, and the good outcome happened here is that thanks to a lot of community pushback, a lot of effort by my staff and myself, working with the council offices, this business has now ceased operating at this premises. I think it's really important that we look at the next changes to City Plan 2014 to make sure that this type of really what you would call, I mean, I don't think you could really describe it as sport and recreation, which is sort of what it was being described as. It really was demolition, and it should not have been undertaken in a place that was immediately adjoining residential properties. So I think we need to look at some fine tuning to the district centre zoning to make sure this doesn't happen anywhere else. Obviously, if this type of business is supported, it needs to be in secure, soundproofed premises away from residential areas. It was located in an industrial area in Marukor, I think, and I have no idea why it moved to a residential, largely residential area in Corinda. It was a very bad decision. I'm glad the matter has been resolved. I thank all those, the residents, my staff, and the council officers who helped to get a good outcome and stop this really inappropriate use from happening in Corinda.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Shree?
Thanks. I just thought I'd speak on this item as well, because councillor Johnson might be interested to know that I think originally this business was operating in Hyatt Hill. If not, it was a different but very similar business. And, yeah, went through a similar process with council compliance of getting them relocated. I do think it's kind of interesting, because on the one hand, yeah, they're smashing stuff, but maybe it's better to be smashing stuff than, like, hitting other people. Like, you know, it's interesting what we consider a sport, right? Like, boxing is arguably more violent, right, than like breaking some old-
Boxing.
Yeah, right. It's weird. But, so I don't want to be too judgmental about like how, what sorts of recreation people choose to engage with. Also noting that there's a lot of much more significant forms of destruction in this city, which we just call development. And it's just business as usual to demolish old houses, and that's fine. We could demolish a character house, and no one gets in trouble, but someone breaks a few plates, and that's that's a big compliance issue. So, yeah, I do think there's an interesting double standard there, where they probably would have been allowed to do whatever they want if they defined this as construction work, because you can make a heck of a lot of noise if something's defined as a construction site, and there's really not much that people can do. And I know I sound a bit trite about this stuff, but I think this is a really interesting comparison, because council accepted that the kinds of noise here, of this, all this break-in and smashing and stuff, was not appropriate for a residential area. But in those same residential areas, you can have noisy jackhammering and rock breaking starting at 6:30 on a Saturday morning, and that's fine. at 6:30 on a Saturday morning, and that's fine, because it's part of a development. So, if we accept that these kinds of highly disruptive, noisy activities aren't acceptable for this kind of business, and that this kind of business isn't allowed to make all sorts of racket, why is it that another kind of business, i.e. development and demolition and construction, is allowed at really early and odd hours of the day and the week? Just picking up on councillor Johnson's point, though, I agree with the concerns about zoning, and I hope this is something that councillor Allen is also alert to, which is that our, the use codes and the use definitions and the zoning definitions are incredibly out of date in this city, and I don't want to go on a broad-ranging discussion about this, but for example, there are areas where a rage cage would be permitted and allowed under the zoning, but a jazz band isn't allowed to rehearse. So, we've got this weird double standard where live music is often defined as a theatre use, and recording studios are defined as a theatre use, and there are very tight limitations on the kinds of zones where theatre uses are allowed. But some of these other kinds of businesses that are arguably noisier and higher impact end up being allowed in a broader range of areas. So, there is an issue there, particularly with a lot of industrial zonings, where for example, that might be a good place for a rock band to rehearse, but they're not allowed to technically use industrial zone sites for music and live entertainment. So, I won't go on a broader commentary about that right now, but I just do hope councillor Allen and councillor Marks are alert to this, and that the compliance and city planning teams can work together to find some more nuanced and up-to-date definitions about some of these businesses, because I'm seeing so many contradictions like this across the city, and it really just highlights the inadequacy of the current regulatory framework and the way we define certain kinds of businesses and certain kinds of land uses. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Sri. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, acting chair. Look, I agree with the comments made here this afternoon in chambers regarding this. The issue we have is people, businesses, whatever you want to call them, are creating new ways of entertainment, so to speak, that we have not ever come across before, so our local laws generally do not address those issues, and that is a problem. I can't comment on the zoning laws, that's not my portfolio, but as far as the compliance side of things goes, yeah, there was industrial, but there is also an industrial strategy, which is about protecting industrial space. So, what we might consider appropriate for being in an industrial area, potentially city plan, industrial plan, doesn't allow for that. So, as I said, that's not my area of my portfolio, that's something obviously councillor Allen will continue to work with as he roll in that chair, mine is from the compliance. When I talk about home businesses, I often say to people, home businesses were created for, and I'm going to be a little bit sexist here, but for the mum maybe, who potentially was a hairdresser, and has had a baby, and wants to do, continue to do hairdressing, earn a little bit of pocket money, so creates one room in her house to become a hairdresser and have a couple of clients a week. That's what home businesses were created for, and that's what the local law is there to deal with. We have morphed now into way beyond that, so we do have local laws for home businesses, but it is something that we are absolutely looking at addressing in that space. Obviously, Rage Cage never existed, you know, mobile phones never existed when I was growing up, so you didn't have to have laws about mobile phones while you were driving a car. So, it's about us catching up with things as they are created, and unfortunately, we don't change the law as quickly as new endeavours, if you want to use that word, are invented. So, absolutely agree, and we are looking into that and working on that space. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. We'll now put the report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2022 on matters usually considered by the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee be noted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2022 on matters usually considered by the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee be noted. Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. Just before moving to the report, I wish to add my very good wishes to Shane Hackett that the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier will be leaving us. Shane has been responsible for educating me quite a bit. I've been a councillor now for 10 years, and so there is a lot to learn in council, and Shane is one of the many, many people within council who has been patient and tolerant and made sure that I understood some of the intricacies of how council works. And I know that he's going to be greatly missed, I know that he is much respected by the many, many people that he has worked with over the last 27 years of council, and I know that, I've been to at least one farewell, I think it's a bit like Dame Nellie Melber, and there might be one or two that will be sort of, or Johnny Barnham, yes. And, you know, we certainly hope that maybe one day he'll return, because we do know that Shane's contribution to council has been outstanding, and it is, you don't say outstanding lightly when you talk about Shane, because you know that he gives his whole soul to this organisation, and I don't think that we can thank him enough for the 27 years that he has contributed to making the city of Brisbane a better place. So, thank you very much, Shane. Moving to the report, we had two petitions requesting council limit the activities of Barden-Lutro Football Club at Bowman Park, and the petitioners' concerns included the relocation of cricket pitches, the development of new fields, et cetera. Under the terms of the lease, the club is able to use the premises for playing, coaching and practising soccer and cricket, and associated clubhouse activities. The site currently includes those fields, a clubhouse, a canteen, car parking facilities and change rooms. This land use and the associated structures have been established over the site through numerous historic developments and building approvals. Council, as the owner of the land, has the expectation that the less use of the grounds and facilities is compliant with the terms agreed upon within the lease agreement with council, and further expansions or additional impacts to the site would be subject to council oversight, ensuring that the use of the site effectively balances both sporting and community use. There's quite a comprehensive report that is attached to this petition, and the information has been sent back to the petitioners, and I will lead debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising to their feet. I will now put the report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Mr Acting Chair. I have a petition requesting that council make safety adjustments to the intersection at O'Keefe Street and Gillingham Street in Woolongaba.
Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Acting Chair. I have a petition from bus drivers from the Corina Depot Work Group, who regularly drive the 61 route, who have been concerned for some time about safety in the intersection of O'Keefe and Gillingham Street at Woolongaba.
Councillor Marks?
Yes, I have a petition from residents about a footpath.
Councillor Cummings?
Thank you. I've got a petition calling from the Brisbane City Council, refused to allow any club to build a large grandstand on Kitchenah Park, Winham.
Councillor Landers?
Thank you, Acting Chair. I have a petition requesting council approve drainage around the fields at Stanley Day Park.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept those petitions, please?
Mr Acting Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
A second. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions be presented and received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? I see no one standing. Councillors, are there any items of general business?
Thank you, Acting Chair.
Councillor Hammond?
Thank you. I'd like to speak about a couple of things. Firstly, the LGOQ conference I went to in Townsville recently, and also the death of a significant resident, the sad passing of a significant resident in the Marchant Ward, and Northside, and Brisbane large. Mr Acting Chair, the LGOQ conference is a small conference with mayors across our beautiful state of Queensland, and it was interesting to hear what they're finding, their struggles post-COVID is exactly the same as what we're finding here in Brisbane, with the cost of resources going up, which of course is putting added pressure on to those councils' budgets. Mayor Antonio spoke at length, like other mayors did, but I've got a message for the Lord Mayor. Mayor Antonio calls Brisbane, which upset me a little bit, he calls Brisbane Toowoomba South, and is extremely excited about the Olympics and the effects, the effects that are going to have in Brisbane West to their economy. Mayor Antonio spoke about the improvements that he has made in the Toowoomba region in his longstanding time as mayor up there. I would like, I will take this offline with councillor Sri, some of the things that were discussed in our Indigenous councils, I think councillor Sri, if we have time in your diary and my diary to sit down and talk about those, because I'm pretty sure you'll find it quite fascinating up there. Toowoomba Town Centre, it was really quite sad, I'm not Toowoomba, sorry, Townsville Town Centre, it was really quite sad to see the effects of COVID, to see the effects that the tourism, lack of tourism in that once thriving area has experienced. Many of the shops in Townsville have closed. The Toowoomba, so the Townsville council and mayor are trying to encourage people to come back into the CBD. But what I found quite strange, there's a very familiar sign on the Bremmer River. It looks very, very similar to the Brisbane sign. I'm not sure where they got that wonderful idea to have a big sign called Townsville, white, exactly the same as what we have in Brisbane, but I do love going to these regional areas and seeing what they take from Brisbane and implement into their own areas. Finally, I'd like to speak about the passing of Guido Canali. Many of you would have heard in the chamber that I have the Marchant Ward and the residents of Marchant renamed a park after Vera Canali, which was Guido's beautiful wife. Guido Canali has had a small business in the area called Guido Travel, in the Lutwich area, and also in the valley where it first started, for over 30 years just in my ward alone. Guido and his workers through the pandemic worked tirelessly to get people back to Italy, or get them from Italy back to Australia, to the fact that one of his staff was given a very prestigious award by the Italian government for her effort. Guido was not only an amazing small businessman, he gave back to the Italian community across Brisbane. He started, originally his family started the Three Saints Festival, which we only just celebrated on Sunday, last Sunday. Guido and his family have invested a lot of money back into the community. His particular passion for soccer was very evident, and he supported and stood on the boards of those soccer clubs on the Northside of Brisbane for well over 40 years. Guido came to Australia in 1956 as an immigrant. He hit the ground running with a successful business and his family. He lost his wife too young, and brought up his children with the Italian community. I know the Italian community are grieving at the moment for the loss of this very outstanding man who did so much for our Italian community and our sporting community on the Northside. Guido, you will be lost. I had the great pleasure of spending many, many days, many, many years with you, talking about the importance of the Italian community and what it was like to be an immigrant to come to this beautiful country. Guido, you will not be forgotten in our ward. I'm so happy that you got to see the park named after your wife, Vera Canali, before you passed. It was very unexpected. Guido had a fall and passed quite quickly. I say only the good die quick, and Guido, you certainly were one of the great ones. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hammond. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Strunk?
Thank you, Acting Chair. I rise to speak about three items, three events, I suppose, one for each of the, those three long weekends that we had, for some. Some of us, of course, in this chamber, of course, work some of those long weekends as we do as part of our jobs. But the first one was Easter, and of course, I talk about this one because our Lions Club in Forest Lake, for the first time, we normally have, we normally hold what we call the Fish Day on Friday, and we've been doing it for well over 20 years. And so, one of our members said, well, how about we just go to the Lions Park, you know, that one that we just recently had upgraded, and spend a lovely day there, which we did. And I mention that simply because the upgrade of the Lions Park was a contribution from three different sectors, and I have briefly talked about this in the past, and that was from, we got a good portion of money from the Heritage Bank, the community bank in my ward, that looks after a lot of community groups by, you know, for tens of thousands of dollars a year, and we were successful in getting a grant for the upgrade, along with, of course, Brisbane City Council, and also the Lions Club contributed as well. So, it was a really good project, and it's, and then we had a couple of the residents that live across the road come across to say hello, and they say that the park is being used quite a lot, actually, because it's a little bit out of the way, and people in the Parkland Village, of course, are seeing this happen and the usage, but people outside of that area don't really get a chance to see how often it is used. So, it's really gratifying to know that the money we spent there, including, you know, community money from Heritage Bank is being well spent. The other one was, of course, Anzac Day, as we all went off to our Anzac Day services, whether it be a dawn service, or a morning service, or a sunset service, which I went to over dogs' Queensland. But I mentioned Anzac Day for a couple of reasons. First of all, the ongoing support that the Lions Club of Anala have undertaken this in the Anala area at Isa Park for well over 20 years. There's no local RSL sub-branch that undertakes this work, so the Lions Club all those years ago stepped in, and they organised a parade, as well as a service, and I have mentioned this before, but Isa Park is one of the best-kept little parks in Brisbane. It's, whether it be during or before Anzac Day, being set up for Anzac Day, or after, it's really well looked after by our council officers. And I just want to say thank you again for the Lions Club for their continuing commitment. At the Forest Lake, this year it was standing room only, at the Forest Lake Amphitheatre, even with the rain, because we all thought maybe the rain would sort of dampen people's spirits. Well, it didn't, and I think everyone here is sort of shaking their heads, no, they didn't, it wasn't dampening at all. So, it was standing room only, and there was a lot of umbrellas, of course, right? But it was really well attended, and it just shows you how much Anzac Day has really become absolutely part of the culture here in Brisbane. I remember when I first came out to this country some number of years ago now, there was Anzac Day services, but the numbers and the kids and the schools and all that, over the years, have really grown to be part of that service, and it's really gratifying to see those. And of course, as we know, as we all know, they're celebrating those in the schools as well prior to Anzac Day, and in one case, Service in South A did it the day after, which was really a great commitment on their behalf. And of course, last weekend, of course, was Labor Day, and there was a big turnout for the Labor Day march. But of course, Labor Day started back in the late 1800s, and it was started by workers who were wanting to seek a shorter working week. Back then, of course, you were working 12, well, you could be working 12 days, or sorry, 12 hours a day, six days a week, and of course, they advocated for the change of that, and thank goodness they did, because, you know, honestly, I don't know how they did it, because, you know, it wasn't very... very automated back then. It was all, it was all manual labour for a lot of the industries. And, and if you think about it, listen, we're all workers. We all work for the community, we all work for our society. So we, we should all be collectively celebrating what, what's, I suppose, the, the conditions that have improved for us as workers over the years. And now we've got an eight day, sorry, an eight hour working day for a lot of people, full-time people, and, and we probably only work five days a week, again, depending upon your industry. Anyway, thank you, Mr Acting Chair.
Thank you councillor. Further general business, councillor Mackay.
Thanks Acting Chair. I rise to speak about three things. First might be community awareness, Anzac Day and flood recovery. On Sunday, I was having breakfast in a cafe and was witness to a horrific accident. A 61-year-old man slipped on a step and fell and cracked his head so hard that his skull split open. As you can imagine, it was horrific, there was a lot of blood. And unfortunately, there were also three people standing around saying, oh my God, Bill, are you okay? What do I do? I take this opportunity to remind everyone through you Chair, please consider doing a first aid course. As councillor Murphy, as a fellow former army reservist would know, you don't get a choice about doing first aid in the army, you learn it. And I'm really glad that I did because this man, Bill, was in a very bad way. It was very ugly. And I was glad to be able to help him until the ambulance arrived. And I don't know Bill's last name, but I really hope he's okay. And I just hope that if you think about that as someone in your family and just wonder if you knew what to do, maybe take a day and go and do a first aid course. On a happier note, when we talk about Anzac Day, we talk about commemoration and not celebration. And I was honoured to participate in the commemoration of Anzac Day, not only in my local schools, but also at local services. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend services at Fictry Pocket State School, Indrapilly State School, Indrapilly State High School, and the Queensland Academy of Science, Math and Technology, all of which put on wonderful services, all run by students. And I commend all of those students for participating in this to keep the Anzac spirit alive. And it's my honour as always to lay a wreath made by the children of the schools at both of the services in my local area being To Wong and Indrapilly. And the wonderful kids at Fictry Pocket State School made a realistic wreath, which I laid at the Indrapilly Service in, in Keating Park. And thank you to the Indrapilly Sherwood RSL for putting that on. And the Class 4A from Indrapilly State School made a wreath that was more artistic and representative of the poppies, which I laid at Anzac Memorial in To Wong Memorial Park. Unfortunately, it was made of paper and it didn't survive, but it was the thought that counted. Finally, I just want to put on the record how important our flood recovery progress is. If you drive down the streets of St Lucia or Indrapilly at the moment, you'd never know there was a flood. If you didn't get out of your car, you would see where the verges have come back to life. You might see a little plaster dust from dumped masonite. But all in all, things look normal. And I was very privileged to have with me on Friday, Major General Jake Elwood, and he came out, as I understand, he's doing a few trips around the place, but he came out to Walter Taylor. And we went to a place called Twiggs Street, which is in Indrapilly. It's just near the Indrapilly River Walk. Councillor Murphy came out there with me one day. And during the floods, actually councillor Marks was with me when we went and visited Lees and Jane in Twiggs Street. These guys had only just been, had only just moved in. The previous owner was offered a flood buyback and he refused, but then sold the house to this young couple. And the water came, I don't know, over your head. It was horrific for them, devastating. Everything was gone. And councillor Marks and I were there at the peak of the, well, not the peak of the water, but the peak of the recovery. Everything they owned was on the, on the footpath and it was, it was pretty bad. Including his guitar, which had unfortunately warped. I went back there with Major Elwood, Major General Elwood, and you'll be pleased to know they've got a new kitchen, things are recovering and they're coming along, and I've sent some photos through. But it's not until you get out of your car and walk through the front gate that you see things are not back to normal. And very quickly, the general and I walked up to River Walk so we could see this wonderful piece of in public infrastructure and how it survived the flood. And it was great. The Indrapilly Canoe Club next door, not so great, but the River Walk is, seems to be 100% back to normal. And as we were walking back to our car, there was an old man in his front yard. And I said, how are you mate? You all right? Oh, he said, said, oh, how's your flood recovery? And he put his hands on the fence, oh, not good. And we thought, oh, hello, red flag here. So he said, can we have a bit of a chat? And we met Warren, he's 83 years old, he lives by himself. He has a three-storey house. He has at the moment, two lights and a fridge. It's, it's really hard to put your head around how badly some people are affected. And when his next-door neighbour seems 100% fine. So we went and spent some time with Warren and we organised Meals on Wheels, which is arriving today, and he'll have a week of food delivered. And we'll figure out what else he needs for food after that. And he had no furniture, because everything had either floated away or was dumped on the, on the footpath. And unfortunately, during the flood, he fell over and crushed his ribs on his bedside table. So he wasn't even there when the mud army, mud army came through. So when he got back, he had a pretty much a bare house. So the general and I have sort of split what we're going to do, and the general's looking after getting him some furniture with Give It. And as I said, we've organised some Meals on Wheels. But maybe if anyone's watching and you live in a flooded street, just go and knock on your neighbour's door and see how they're doing. Because from the outside, Warren's house looks great. The lawns are mowed, the bins are out, but down the back where it flooded, things are still pretty bad. So we're going to do what we can to help him, and the general's going to put him in contact with the aid agencies and we'll go from there. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Mackay. Any further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you. Mr Acting Chair, I've spoken before on this issue, I'm going to raise it again today because it's, it's a big problem in my area. There are problems with council SEs who have received grants from the Commonwealth Government. In my ward, there's two clubs who received hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants from the Commonwealth Government, while they've been promised it. It's, it's a common campaign promise made by federal LNP members, as people would be aware. The problem in Winhamanley and various other places in Brisbane is that the LNP-dominated Brisbane City Council are very difficult to deal with in getting approval to undertake a project and getting assistance to complete a project. Now, the clubs in my area, Bayside United Football Club and Wyndham District Rugby Union Club are very worried. They've actually been getting letters now from Commonwealth Government Department saying, what of this money you were promised three years ago? What's happened with it? You know, why hasn't it been spent? Has the project been completed? And, well, I, I have to say that obviously the project hasn't been completed. So three years after the local LNP federal member promised large amounts of money, guess what? The projects have not been completed. In fact, Bayside United Football Club Soccer Club have been given a stop-work notice for six months. Bayside have been trying to build a small extension to their clubhouse and a new dressing shed for female players. Now, Bayside did not cause any contamination on their land, they leased an old ex-dump site, of which there are dozens around the city. Bayside obtained professional reports on their project, only to be told more were required. Finally, about two years after Commonwealth money was promised, building work finally started, but it's never been finished. The front of the club now looks like a derelict building site, and not surprisingly, their registration numbers have collapsed this year. They're down by some 75 players, which is about 15%. And the club blame the fact that their clubhouse looks like a dump for this occurring. But that's nothing compared to the Wyndham District Rugby Union Club, also known as the mighty Wyndham Bugs. They were promised funds about the same time as Bayside United, three years ago. And fortunately, three years later, not one shovel of soil has been shifted on another old dump site. Now, this club has a rugby arm and a netball arm, and the project they were seeking to undertake was four netball training fields and a car park. Now, these clubs feel that council has been mucking them around, they feel they have not been assisted, they have some evidence of a different approach being taken from other regional councils in Queensland. And I've spoken about this issue before, but I again call upon this LNP administration to point experts to assist clubs in this situation. There'll be more in this election. Please do whatever you can to assist these clubs so that Commonwealth money can be used in improving facilities, not squandered on an uncooperative council.
Any further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. Mr Acting Chair, I rise to speak tonight on some local events and issues in the Calumbar Ward. Mr Acting Chair, I'd like to start tonight by saying a big thank you to the Alchester Joey's Cubs Scouts Venturers and Rovers. Now, they weren't able to do Clean Up Australia Day earlier in the year, and they have gone out this weekend just passed on Sunday morning, and they've done their regular clean-up through Carrawatha Forest. Now, it is a bit different when you're doing Clean Up Australia Day a couple of months later, because there isn't the same level of resourcing available. But I do commend all of the leaders and also the parent helpers who've all chipped in to help with bringing about their trailers and making sure that the young Joey's Cubs Scouts Venturers and Rovers were all appropriately supervised. And can I say that they pulled out two and a half trailer loads plus a car load of rubbish that they took to the dump on Sunday afternoon? But on top of that, they pulled out 54 tyres. And in liaising with our PPI staff who work in that space in Carrawatha Forest, I sent them a link for something that I found about tyre recycling. And I've got the, the response this afternoon to confirm that all of those 54 tyres will be recycled for use in other things, such as rubber soft fool that we see in our playgrounds. And there is one organisation that does this as a business, and they are coming out to collect those 54 tyres. So that is a really good lesson for our young people to see in action that they've gone out, they've done the clean-up, they're helping the environment, and, and the big quandary was, what do we do with all these tyres? So now it's a really great thing to be able to confirm for them that they will be recycled, and that is the way that council is proactively working with them to do that. Can I also acknowledge St John's Anglican College? They recently had their new middle school buildings officially opened and dedicated by the Governor of Queensland, the new Governor of Queensland. And that was very exciting for those students of our local community to be in the presence of the Governor. And I do acknowledge that councillor Strunk also attended, as well as the federal member for Oxy. And, and that is a really good way that we can work with our local schools to show that support, but particularly for those young people that are entering that year seven level, it is a great space for them to be in, to have breakout areas, and have that synergy with the outside facilitating a very serene, calm learning environment that is going to be very productive for their schooling years. I would just like to also say that work is certainly underway on a few projects in Calumbar Ward. And councillor Davis and I have been in constant contact about the wonderful new amenities building that's going in at Heathwood Park. And certainly when I saw it yesterday morning, councillor Davis, it looks like it's getting ready for the splashes of paint to come on. And I know that everybody in the community is certainly looking forward to that new facility supporting so much of the cricket, and particularly the junior and girls cricket. And the girls cricket at that particular ground at Brisbane Super Kings is thriving. We have so many young girls that are joining up cricket. It is wonderful to see their participation, but it's also great to see the competition that is happening and the skill level that is improving in so many of our young players. And whilst we're on that active and healthy theme down at Cole Bennett Park in Alchester, the new car park that is adjacent to the Alchester Little Athletics has been started, and it is certainly going ahead great guns. The, the council officers that are down there managing that project are doing a great job. And this will be about a nine-week project, but it will provide a lot more safety, particularly around two schools and also in the vicinity of that particular sporting facility and council parkland. And because it is council parkland, it not only facilitates that parking during little athletics events, during before and after school pickup, but also for anybody else who wants to go down there and use the park at any other time, they have got safe parking and they're not parking on the streets. So it's always good to have that. I'd also like to acknowledge one of my residents who this year coordinated a couple of Anzac services. So Alan Price, who is a life member of 4RAR, not only conducted the 6am service at Alchester Sports Club, which was supported by the Alchester Scouts, but he also did another one at the new retirement community in Streton Gardens that he's only recently moved into. And can I say, his efforts to maintain that is a great sign for our local community. It's such a major contribution. Alan and his wife Maureen laid a wreath for a number of family members, and I do use this opportunity to acknowledge and pay tribute to their daughter, who passed away and who had served our nation. And it is, Anzac Day is always a very sombre occasion for the family, but they always give willingly to their wider community. And in fact, for many years had had private Anzac Day driveway services with the flagpole out the front of their home in Delphora Strive. And since moving, Alan and Maureen have basically departed from that old tradition and, and look to have it in the wider community. I'd also like to acknowledge the St Stephen's School Choir, who came down to the Bolton Clark Retirement Community in Parkinson and performed for the older residents there. We had to move everything inside at the last minute, and, and it was a beautiful service inside. And the young choir, they, they absolutely warmed the hearts of, of many of the older residents there, so I do acknowledge them. To all of my schools who held Anzac services this year, I say to all of them, thank you for showing your respect. And can I commend all of the students at all of the schools, because I know that they behaved impeccably and they certainly displayed a level of decorum that was fitting for those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, who served and who continue to serve our nation in uniform. I'd also like to just put on the record that I'm just a little bit concerned about the way the state government is actually treating the need of Polara residents. It's very disappointing that they are just not getting on board with the need for a bus service in Polara. Now, I have many residents who cannot go to a shopping centre, who cannot go to a chemist, see a doctor, and even just get to work or school because of the lack of a bus service. Now, I know I have raised the Polara bus service many times in this place, and my advocacy has been unwavering. But it's interesting, when Translink officers said on the 16th of February, we could go six to nine months with temporary bus stops. And then on the 8th of March, they're saying, we know we'll need temporary bus stops in place of the permanent due to the design and construction schedule complaints. At a minimum for the temporary stops, we'd need a J-pole, nameplate and timetable cases for the new SSTTs. for the new SSTTs.' But then, we get to April, and we get, I spoke to our governance board yesterday about the Polara service extension. At this stage, we're not comfortable implementing so far away from having complete bus stops. And then the 5th of April, we see Translink Governance has recently given the internal project team the direction to not proceed with implementing the service change, and want to determine an implementation date when the construction schedule for the final permanent bus stop infrastructure is known.
Councillor Owen, your time has expired. Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on bus lanes and development of floodplains, but also, I briefly note, also in addition to the school ANZAC Day commemorations, I also went along to one on the Monday morning. Must say, it was lovely. I was struck, though, by the killing that the sound companies are making at some of these little community events, they're charging through the nose for PA hire. And in our electorate, we loan out PA systems to a lot of community groups and RSLs and that sort of stuff. And it might be a service that other council ward offices, but maybe that Brisbane City Council itself should be looking at doing a bit more of. I know some councillors give grants for these events, but it seems like a lot of events are basically using the council grant money just to hire a PA from a private company. It would be more efficient, actually, if councils provided more direct support and simply made PA systems and sound amplification systems available for free on a loan basis to a lot of these community groups. At my ward office, we now have seven PA systems that we loan out. On a given weekend, probably three or four of them will be borrowed by different community groups. So we have some really large ones that are sort of the size you'd use for a big outdoor concert. We have some medium-sized ones that are good for conferences and community meetings, and then we have some battery-powered ones that are great for gigs in parks where there aren't, where there's not access to mains power. So each year, we just sort of add to that little, I guess, arsenal, if you want to call it that, of PA systems that we buy using the ward office budget. We spend a lot less on newsletters as a result, so we don't spend very much on printing, and we put that money into PA systems instead. And as a result, a lot of community groups are able to borrow that equipment for free. But yeah, I was just struck by the fact, when I was talking to these guys at the ANZAC Day thing, and they spent 1,700 bucks on a PA system for one day. I was like, anyway. Wanted to speak primarily about bus lanes, and I thought I'd talk now to save having to have individual conversations with councillor Cook and councillor Cunningham and councillor Murphy. I think a lot of the eastern suburbs councillors would be aware that traffic congestion on Litton Road's gotten really bad, partly because of COVID and people switching off public transport, and partly because the city cunts are out of operation. So councillor Cook and councillor Cunningham, just FYI for both of you, myself and the state MP for South Brisbane, Amy McMahon, have just written to councillor Murphy and the mayor and to councillor Wines, asking for a new round of consultation about the possibility of peak hour transit lanes on Litton Road. We've primarily just focused on that inner-city stretch where Litton Road is already three lanes wide and heading into Shaftstone Avenue. So councillor Cunningham, part of that is actually currently in your ward of Cooperoo Ward, it used to be the Gabba Ward. But that particular stretch of Litton Road is very heavily congested, and I've talked to a lot of parents, I've talked to a lot of public transport users, but interestingly, there's a lot of parents who say they feel they would benefit a lot from those transit lanes, and it would encourage carpooling and reduce the overall number of cars on the road. So rather than pure bus lanes, which are just for the buses, I think there's going to be a bit more community support for T3 transit lanes. I think T2 transit lanes are kind of pointless, because then just everyone in an Uber uses them. But yeah, so we, as in the Greens, have written to the mayor to say, 'Look, time for a new consultation about this.' The last time we did a survey about this was 2015, and back then, there was just slightly more opposition than support for the idea. So I do think it's kind of time now to look again at that proposal. Yeah, it's a three-lane, three lanes in each direction, so it would just be one of those lanes during peak hour would convert to T3 lane, probably similar to how Waterworks Road operates. But yeah, if councillor Cook or councillor Cunningham wanted me to discuss that further, very happy to do so. And maybe you also want to write to the mayor and express your support, I'm not sure. I think it's a good idea. I think it would be really helpful to get the traffic flowing a bit better along there. I might also just, yeah, I'll probably leave that there. Other than to say, I don't know if councillor Wines is listening, but there are other corridors like Ipswich Road and Main Street that also really urgently need some bus lanes. I talk regularly to some of the bus network planners, and they're like, 'Yeah, of course we'd like to put more frequent services along this route, but the main problem is that the buses just get stuck in general traffic anyway.' So it's quite hard, in practical terms, to improve the frequency of bus services when all the buses are just held up by the cars. And the obvious solution that many cities around the world have adopted is transit lanes and bus lanes. So right now, obviously, I'm writing about Litton Road and Shaftstone Avenue through Kangaroo Point, but I think we, it is time that we look at peak hour bus lanes along, or transit lanes along Main Street and Ipswich Road as well. So I don't know where councillor Griffiths is, I'm not sure how happy he'll be about the proposal, but I do think taking away a lane of general traffic along Ipswich Road in peak hour and turning that into a T3 lane that can also carry the buses would be really helpful. And similarly, there is a case for doing this on Stanley Street as well, and the added benefit of a T3 or bus lane along Stanley Street would be that it would also double as an ambulance lane, because there are increasingly some concerns about ambulances being able to get to the children's hospital and martyr hospital, because they're held up in general traffic. So having that clearer lane that's primarily for buses would also have a really good emergency healthcare outcome. Might leave that there, but also just wanted to reiterate my concerns about council development on the floodplain. I know councillor Adams, during her time as Chair of City Planning, looked at this a little bit, sorry, and councillor Allen, as the current chair, is no doubt exercising his mind on this topic too. But we really do need to stop approving new development down on these high-density areas. There's, councillor Allen, there's a new DA on the corner of Carrilpa Street and Bailey Street in West End, it's something like 80-plus apartments. It's in floodplain in Area Two, and part of the site is floodplain in Area One. So part of the site is only 40 centimetres above sea level, that's 40 centimetres about above sea level. And council isn't even requiring the developer to do a flood risk assessment, because the developer is saying that their habitable rooms and their electrical infrastructure will be above the flood level. But by flood level, they just mean the, essentially the 2011 flood level, or the 1% annual exceedance probability flood level. It's quite possible that those apartments could still be flooded in a higher flood level event. So it's really surprising to me that even in the wake of the February floods, we've got developers down there, I think this one is Stockwell, proposing 80-odd apartments on a site that is ridiculously flood-prone. It didn't just flood in 2011 and in February 22, it's flooding every couple of years at a lower level when there's, when the river's got a really bad king tide. These are not sites where we should be building high-density residential homes, particularly when you've got two levels of basement car parking that's filling up with muddy river water. This is not an appropriate site for that kind of residential development, and the council really should be looking more closely at these sites. But even the fact that a flood risk assessment is not required is really baffling to me, and I think reflects poorly on council's entire planning and development assessment process. Most residents I've talked to are understandably quite baffled and outraged that development would be permitted and seriously considered on these kinds of sites. And I do think corruption is a piece of the puzzle. I don't, I don't know why we keep making these decisions. It just defies common sense. And if another council wants to explain why they think this is acceptable, I'm not suggesting that there's been brown paper bags of money passing under the table. I'm talking about a more institutionalised form of corruption, where developers have so much influence over planning and development decisions, that when the planners are saying, 'Oh, should we rezone this for higher-density development?' The developers' voices carry too much weight in the conversation. So honestly, if administration councillors can give me some other explanation for why we would seriously consider approving developments on these sites, I'm all ears. I'm keeping an open mind about it, but it just doesn't make sense. From a good planning perspective, these are sites that flood to the level of many metres and are extremely vulnerable to flooding. Part of this site I'm referring to, Carrilpa Street, it's got a 1 in 10, it's a 10% annual exceedance probability chance of flooding. So it's not even a 1% or quote-unquote '1 in 100 years', we're talking 1 in 10-year flood risk. And they're still proposing to build apartments on there. So what the heck is going on? Why is the council seriously considering these development applications? Why are developers putting them in? Like, they obviously think they're going to get approved, and in many cases, they are getting approved. So I heard councillor Murphy on that one, I'll take that interjection, housing affordability. This is a trap for low-income residents, because if we're approving them to be built in these areas, they end up with massive insurance burdens. So the developers, they make their money and leave, but 10, 20 years down the track, you've got residents and body corporates stuck with the burden of ever increasing insurance premiums.
Councillor Shree, your time has expired. Thank you. Are there any further, deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair, and I would just like to stand to add to the, I'm going to say condolences that we have for council on the loss of Shane Hackett, from what the Lord Mayor and councillor Howard has said this afternoon. I've had the great pleasure of working with Shane for my entire time in and council, from the day I arrived in council in 2008 as Deputy Chair of City Planning at the time, and Economic Development, and Shane was in town planning at that time. He has been extremely helpful, as councillor Howard mentioned, for a new councillor fresh out of Education Department to learn about how planning works. But you do tend to learn it on the job, as everybody in this place knows. But Shane, I've worked with closely over that time, and then of course, as Lifestyle Chair with Shane as branch manager for several branches across there. But he did absolutely find his watermark with customer services and has been doing such a spectacular job in that space for the last few years. I know he's loved that job, we have loved having him in that job. But after 27 years, change is as good as a holiday. I may have a few words with Mayor Williams next time I see her about this, but they are very lucky in Redlands City Council to be getting such an experienced and professional council officer as Shane Hackett. And as was said by councillor Howard, we hope we may see him back here one day. But best of luck, and congratulations on your promotion, and take every opportunity you can, you thoroughly deserve it, Shane. Thank you.
Are there any further items of general business? I see no one standing. I declare the meeting closed. And may the force be with you.